Point.
This program is sponsored by Medical Arts Hearing Instruments, 52 West Street in Leominster, locally and authentically providing better hearing and quality of life since 1978.
For a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Susan Shelton to the Library Board of Trustees term to expire April fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. And Ms. Shelton, we have you on the line?
Yes, you do, Counselor.
Okay, so just as a matter of introduction, I am Gail Feckley. I am the Chairwoman of Ways and Means. And on our committee is also Counselor Claire Frida and Counselor John Dombrowski. And Susan, certainly just about all of us know you. You have come down before the City Council on many, many occasions to discuss the budget and other things. Adding a touch of class to our chambers, I might add. And so we wanted to have you down here just to discuss the appointment basically for the public because this is what we do when we have a new appointee. So that the public who may not know you as well as we do can get to know you, your background, and how you feel you will be able to contribute to the Board of Trustees. So I will ask you to do that now.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Feckley. Well, my name again is Susan Shelton. I was the Director of the Leominster Public Library in nineteen eighty-three until my retirement in late July of two thousand and seventeen. That is thirty-two years. During my time as the Library Director, I was able to be involved in many initiatives of a library, including being one of the charter members for the Central Western Massachusetts Automated Resource Sharing Network and working on the entire expansion and renovation project of the new Leominster Public Library, which opened in two thousand and seven, including the associated fundraising. During my time as the Library Director, libraries certainly grew greatly over the thirty-two years. But I was also involved in many professional organizations related to libraries. I served as the President of the Central and Western Massachusetts Automated Resource Sharing Network. I served as the President of the Central Massachusetts Regional Library System, which then was incorporated into Massachusetts Library System. I served as the Vice President of the State Advisory Council on Libraries. And I was elected the Secretary of the Massachusetts Library Association with a professional association. And I was also involved with numerous local and area organizations and committees during the thirty-two years. I was the Director, including I served as the Board of the United Way. And I was first to work for O'Carion in the city of Leominster back in the eighties. Since my retirement, I did work part-time with the interim director for six months after I retired. I have also served as the part-time assistant director of Princeton Memorial Library in Ashburnham. And I have participated in the search committees for the new Director of the Shrewsbury Public Library and the Princeton Public Library. Obviously, I spent my entire forty-year career in Leominster, starting as the Head of Children's Services and then as the Assistant Director of becoming the Director. I have a great love for the Leominster Public Library and for the community of Leominster. And I feel like my knowledge of both the library and the community and my love of both served me well as the Library Trustee.
Gail, just a moment, is John Dombrowski on the line now? Okay, can you get his phone there, Caitlin?
Yep, I caught him and just give me one moment and I can mute everyone else.
All right, thank you very much. I'm just trying to cut down some of the background noise there, Gail. Okay, Gail, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, no, that's fine, that's great. Okay, Ms. Shelton, I'm going to keep this very brief. I can't think of anybody that would be more qualified to serve on the Library Board of Trustees. And I'm sure that the constituents of the city of Leominster would be very, very lucky and grateful that you have decided to continue with your service to the city by serving on this board. So I am going to be very, very pleased to be able to recommend your appointment when we get to it on our calendar. And we'll ask the President if he can move it up on the calendar because we do have lengthy one tonight. And I am going to go to my committee members to see if they have any questions or comments for you. So I will ask Counselor Frida.
Hey, Susan, how are you? Hello, Counselor, how are you tonight? I'm good, I'm good. I don't have a whole lot to add. I think when you said you love Leominster, I think that feeling is reciprocated by the community as well. You weren't just the Director, you're an exceptional Director and we all know that. So I'm going to be very happy to support your nomination tonight and look forward to seeing you around town again.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Dombrowski.
Hi, Susan, how are you?
Hi, Counselor Dombrowski, how are you tonight?
I'm well. I can't think of anyone better suited. I'm happy to support that. And I just want to thank you for making yourself available for this important position.
Thank you very much.
Okay, any other counselors have any comments or questions for Ms. Shelton?
Counselor Feckley, this is Counselor Shalafu Zephyr. Yeah. I go ahead to say I've... Oh, thank you very much. No, I've worked with Susan Shelton... Hello, Susan, by the way. Thank you for joining us tonight. I wanted to... I just wanted to say that I've had the good fortune of working very closely with Susan for a number of years, both as a trustee and before that on the Building Committee, the Fundraising Committee, with the Friends. And I couldn't be happier, both for myself personally but also for the city. I think the city is getting somebody who is very dedicated to the mission, has the most knowledge of anybody certainly that I know about libraries and does love Leominster. So welcome aboard, Susan. I am thrilled that you're going to be with us.
Thank you very much.
Any other counselor?
Counselor Feckley. Mark Bedanza. I, like Counselor Shalafu Zephyr, have had the pleasure of working with Susan for quite a long time. A number of years ago, I spoke in favor of the library addition, which got me appointed to the Library Building Committee and which started a very happy tenure, involved with the Leominster Library and developed a close relationship with Susan as a friend and as a colleague in the library. And it's been nothing but delightful ever since. And as Counselor Shalafu Zephyr indicated, we are both trustees, by the way, also on the Library Board of Trustees. And could not find a better candidate for the job and very happy to have you, Susan.
Thank you very much.
Counselor Angelina, we need you. Yes, spoken up, go right ahead.
Yes, thank you very much. Good evening, Susan. I just want to thank you for your continued commitment to serve the community. I know that you are a perfect fit as a trustee. And I also want to thank you for providing me with the easiest vote in my short career here as a Counselor. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor.
Any other counselors?
It's Counselor David Cormier.
Go ahead, Counselor Cormier.
Thank you. Welcome, Susan. It's good to hear your voice again and see that you're around.
Thank you, Counselor.
We certainly miss you. And, you know, honestly, I just want to echo all the same comments from my fellow colleagues on the City Council that it's going to be one of the easiest votes that I've ever had to take. And unlike Counselor Angelina, I've been here ten and a half years. It's going to be one of the easiest votes in my ten and a half years. So welcome back and it's good to see you again. I'm glad you're well and looking to volunteer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other counselors? Okay, hearing done. Ms. Shelton, thank you so much for coming down or actually coming before us virtually tonight. And, you know, just as classy person as you are, that was a very classy interview. And we will, again, as I said, we will be asking the President to move your appointment up when we get to matters before the City Council. So thank you again and we wish you the best. And the city is all the better that you are returning to help us out.
Well, thank you very much for everyone's kind work. I am delighted to be hopefully reconnected with the Leominster Public Library.
Have a good evening, thank you.
Same to you all.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Feckley. If that concludes your interview, we can move to Counselor Cormier in the six fifty public hearing.
Yes, I'm all set. Thank you, Counselor President.
Counselor President Bedanza?
Yes.
May I please unmute everyone for a moment so I can find Dave Flohling? He's the representative for this one.
Oh, okay, very good.
Mr. President?
Yes, yes, Counselor Cormier.
The six fifty hearing, isn't that for Counselor?
It is. I'm sorry, I misspoke. Counselor Frida.
Unmuted.
All right, so the clerk's going to unmute everyone so she can find the representative from Comcast.
Mr. Flohling, can you please speak for me?
Yes, Dave Flohling, Comcast.
Thank you very much. I have you. And I'm going to mute everybody else.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And Counselor Frida, I'm sorry, apologize. It is your hearing. Could you begin the six fifty hearing, please?
Sure, thank you, no problem. Sixty-six dash twenty, Comcast in Massachusetts three, Incorporated. Request permission to install a new underground conduit to service number one Main Street, Water Street. Adding utility pole number three, excavating to place two four-inch PVC conduits, two hundred and ninety-five feet plus or minus, to a proposed twenty-four by thirty-six vault. From the newly placed vault, continuing with the excavation, the two four-inch PVC conduit, three hundred and fifty-five feet plus or minus, to a proposed twenty-four inch by thirty-six inch vault located on Mechanic Street. From the newly placed vault, the conduit will continue three feet plus or minus and on the property of one Main Street. In addition, two four-inch PVC conduits will be stubbed out of the vault for future takeoff. And with that, Dave, is it?
Yes.
Okay, do you want to elaborate on that a little bit?
Yes, so again, my name is Dave Flohling from Comcast. We received a request to provide the Comcast service to the bank at the corner of one Main Street. In order for us to provide that service, we would need to excavate on Water Street. That would be the closest location that we would be able to come to, come from, to be able to provide that service. We are strategically placing the vaults along that route for future takeoffs for any other businesses along that path. And coming out of the vault at the corner of Mechanic Street, we're also making provisions to stub out a couple of conduits if we needed to continue our conduits out to provide service to other businesses on Main Street. We anticipate the work will take approximately a week, weather permitting, and depending upon the excavation and what is, you know, basically unearthed. So basically should take a whole week.
Okay, I went by there the other day. Is this the area right in the parking lot? Is that going to connect to that? The parking lot?
Well, we're not going to be excavating... Yeah, we're not going to be excavating in the parking lot. It will all be in the right of way.
Okay, so I just wondered if it was... It looked like it was National Grid. But I wondered if it was a joint effort?
No, it's not.
Oh, okay, all right, okay. All right, I'm good with that.
Counselor Frida?
Yes.
Excuse me, but it is now seven o'clock, so I am going to start the meeting. I ask everybody to stand to recite the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which is in one nation, under God, individual for liberty and justice. Okay, we'll start with a roll call of the City Councilors in attendance. Counselor Frida?
Present.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Present.
Counselor Shalafu Zephyr?
Present.
Counselor Feckley?
Present.
Counselor Angelina?
Present.
Counselor Arndger?
Present.
Counselor Pauline Cormier? Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Nope, she is on, but let me...
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Present.
Counselor David Cormier?
Present.
And I shall be recorded as present. All nine counselors are in attendance. Does the Chairwoman of Records have any reports?
I do, Mr. President. I have the minutes of the City Council meeting of June eighth, two thousand and twenty. And I find them to be in order and I ask that they be placed on file.
Very well, thank you very much, Counselor Feckley.
Mr. President?
Uh, I... Yes?
Counselor Angelina, I just... I would request that in the May twenty-six minute... Okay. So the hearing, it took place at six-thirty. I had recused myself and I don't see that reflected in the minutes.
Okay, Counselor Feckley, could you take a look at that and perhaps make the appropriate amendment?
I will. And that's May... Counselor Angelina, that's May twenty-sixth?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, I'll make notes and I will... I will with the City Court to have that reconciled.
Thank you very much. Okay, I would entertain a motion to go into recess.
I'll make a motion for David Cormier.
Okay, motion by Counselor Cormier. Counselor Frida, will you second?
I... I agree with her. That's all right, second of the time.
Okay, thank you very much. Any objection by any Counselor? We are in recess. Okay, Counselor Frida, you may continue with your six fifty hearing.
All right, sorry, Dave, I apologize for that. We're right up against the clock sometime. I will... I have all my questions answered. I did ride by there. And I think the explanation was pretty adequate. So I'll go to other members of my committee to see if they have any questions.
Okay, Counselor Feckley, I'm all set.
Okay, thank you.
And the third member, Counselor Cormier? Madam Clerk, do we have her? We don't have her muted, right?
No. Pauline, can you give me one time for me, please? Pauline?
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Cormier is present.
Do you have anything on the sixty-six dash twenty, the six fifty P M hearing?
I just have a quick question. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, Dave, just quickly, I found that like National Grid, they're moving to move all their... Just as much as they can underground? Do you know if that's Comcast intention as well?
Mr. Flohling has left the call.
Okay, I'm fine.
Perhaps he thought you were finished.
This is Counselor Frida. It is in the petition that it's underground conduit.
Yes, I was just asking whether that is going to be a... The status quo for now on that they're going to be trying to move more equipment underground? But that's fine, I'm sure it's going to come up again and I can ask my question again.
Yep. Okay, any other counselors have any questions or comments? No other counselors have any questions or comments? If not, I will go to the public. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of sixty-six dash twenty? The second time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of sixty-six dash twenty? The third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in support of sixty-six dash twenty? Is there anyone who wishes to speak against sixty-six dash twenty? Again, is there anyone who wishes to speak in opposition to sixty-six dash twenty? The third and final time, is there anyone who wishes to speak in objection to sixty-six dash twenty? Hearing, no comments, I declare the public hearing closed, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Counselor Frida. We'll move on now to the six fifty-one P M hearing. C seventy-one is the Chairman of Finance, ready to proceed?
Yes, and this is a public hearing before the City Council at six fifty-one P M on C dash seventy-one. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one Water Department budget, which totals five million, eight hundred and seventy-six thousand, eight hundred and sixty-five dollars, be adopted as listed, the same amount to be raised as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E. At this point, Mr. President, I will go to the members of Finance and ask if they have any questions or comments, beginning with Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I just want to say that, you know, between the... Roger Brooks has always done a phenomenal job and given us all the numbers that we've needed. And I'm in support.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Cormier. And as Roger Brooks did indicate, you know, he did indicate that they will likely have to reduce their expense a little bit. Revenues are down on the water side a little bit. A big part of that is because of COVID-nineteen and some of the businesses that have been operating at a reduced level or no level at all that has affected water consumption. But he does expect that to, you know, straighten itself out in the long run. And like he said, they will reduce expenses if need be to meet, you know, the revenue stream that's coming in and what we have to spend to operate the system. So with that being said, I'll ask Counselor Angelina, who's also on Finance, if he has any questions or comments?
No, Mr. Chairman, I was quite satisfied with Mr. Brooks's presentation as well. Thank you.
Welcome. Counselor Arndger, anything on C seventy-one?
Nothing further, thank you.
Counselor Feckley?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, Counselor Shalafu Zephyr?
Actually, on C seventy-one, Counselor, and C seventy-two, I am going to recuse myself due to a possible conflict of interest.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Dombrowski?
No, I was satisfied with Mr. Brooks and Mr. Racine's explanations. Thank you very much.
Okay, you're welcome. Counselor Frida?
I'm good with both, okay.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Bedanza?
Thank you, Counselor Cormier. I'm good as well.
Okay, so at this time, I will... To the public on C dash seventy-one, is there any member of the public that would like to speak in opposition to C dash seventy-one? If so, please state your address for the record. Once again, would anybody from the audience like to speak in opposition of C seventy-one? The third time, would anybody like to speak in opposition of C seventy-one? Would anybody like to speak in favor of C seventy-one? For the second time, would anybody in the public like to speak in favor of C dash seventy-one? The third and final time, anybody else in the public like to speak in favor of C dash seventy-one? And if there are no comments or questions from anybody on the City Council, I will declare the public hearing closed. Okay, and Mr. President, we do have another public hearing, which was scheduled for six fifty P M on C dash seventy-two. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requests that the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one Sewer Department budget, which totals five million, five hundred and eleven thousand, five hundred and forty-nine dollars, be adopted as listed, the same amount to be raised as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E. Once again, we did have a budget hearing and Roger Brooks did indicate that everything does look like it's right on track with the sewer end of the department. And there were no indications of any problems. But I will ask if there's any comment by the members of the Finance Committee, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Nothing further. My same comments as C seventy-one. I have full faith and credit in the Raymond Racine and Roger Brooks.
Okay, and Counselor Angelina?
No, Mr. Chairman, I am fine with C seventy-two this evening. Thank you.
Okay, does anybody from the City Council have any comments on C dash seventy-two? Seeing none, I will go to members of the public. Would anybody in the public like to speak in opposition of C dash seventy-two? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody from the public like to speak in opposition to C dash seventy-two? Please state your name and address for the record. And for the third time, would anybody like to speak in opposition to C dash seventy-two? Seeing none, would anybody like to speak in favor of C dash seventy-two? If so, please state your name and address for the record. Once again, would anybody in the public like to speak of C dash seventy-two? And for the third and final time, would anybody in the public speak of C dash seventy- Seeing none, if nobody else in the council has any comments or questions, I will declare the public hearing closed for C dash seventy-two. And we will move on to the public hearing, which was scheduled for six fifty-three P M, which is C dash seventy-four. Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor, requested the fiscal year twenty twenty-one budget, which totals one hundred and thirty-three million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars, be adopted, the same amount to be raised by fiscal year twenty twenty-one revenue. Uh, just wanna say a few words as Chair of Finance, and, uh, then I will go to other members of Finance. I think it was, uh, made very clear when, uh, the budget was, uh, to the City Council, that, um, this is a, a moving document, um, and, um, you know, at this point, I, I believe that we have, you know, the best case scenario for a budget in front of us, and unfortunately, uh, we're waiting to see what the state wants to do, and based on what they do, um, you know, which unfortunately is probably gonna be a reduction, uh, I certainly think it would be not likely that we're gonna see any additional funding, uh, come to us, but, um, at this point, we're waiting to see what the state will do, and then, once they, the final budget, it will be up to the, the Mayor, uh, to decide what he is going to do in terms of, um, taking any cuts or coming to us, uh, with additional appropriations, um, from, you know, any city funds that we, we, we have. So, um, you know, with that being said, I will check with other members of Finance if they have any comments or questions, beginning with Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, I, you know, I, I believe I'm gonna reserve my comments, uh, until such time i- is, is this is taken up for a vote.
Okay. Okay, uh, and Councilor Angelini, do you have any comments or questions regarding C dash seventy-four at this public hearing?
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to take a moment, um, if I could, to recognize what a wonderful job you did as Chairman of Finance throughout the, uh, public hearing process, the budget process, and particularly, um, I was moved by your closing statement, it was compassionate and passionate, and, uh, I think you summed up certainly my feelings that, uh, these budget decisions aren't easy. Um, some of the people that are affected are our friends, neighbors, relatives perhaps, so I just wanted to recognize you for your efforts, I tell you did a wonderful job, and I thank you very much, and I have no questions.
Thank you very much, uh, Councilor Angelini, I appreciate that. Uh, now I will ask other members of the City Council if they have any comments or questions regarding C dash seventy-four, and I can make my way around the room. Councilor Badanza, do you have any comments or questions regarding C dash seventy-four?
Thank you, I, I do have a few comments, um, Mr. Chairman. Um, just to clarify, this has sort of been a, um, as it is, uh, some years a little bit more difficult than others, but every year, obviously municipal finance raises a lot of questions, with the public especially, uh, as well as, uh, elected officials. We all know that, uh, we have the restriction in Massachusetts of Proposition Two and a Half. Um, Lemester for the last several years, for many years, has used its two and a half percent increase. This budget, uh, does that as well, as we were informed, uh, by the administration, and that two and a half percent increase raises about two million dollars of additional revenue. The other, uh, revenue source, um, for the city beyond the Proposition Two and a Half increase is about a seven hundred thousand dollar increase in new growth. So Lemester's new revenues, um, over and above or different from state aid, are about two point seven million for this fiscal year. Uh, Lemester's in a relatively unique position, uh, to a lot of communities, to have an excess levy capacity, uh, meaning that we could actually raise taxes by another five percent. We, uh, in the past did not use two and a half percent increases going back several years, and we have accumulated that excess levy capacity, and the law allows us to use that in the future. However, there would need to be a two-thirds vote of the City Council, uh, to add to the school budget under Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-two. Um, there is an oppo- opportunity under that state law to add to the school budget, provided there is levy capacity to do it. If we were like most communities and we had used that two and a half, uh, we had no excess capacity beyond our two and a half percent increase which we're taking, we would not have any option to do this. Um, to be frank, uh, we do have the option to increase the school budget as a City Council. A lot of times I've heard bandied about that the City Council can do nothing. That's not exactly true, the City Council could re- could raise taxes beyond two and a half percent. However, I don't, uh, guesstimate that there is any support, uh, in the City Council for doing that. Uh, every year we hear of City Councilors, uh, not only about budgets from various departments, but we also hear from taxpayers about the burdens of the two and a half percent increase and any shifts in taxes from different types of property or different classes of property, from commercial and industrial property to residential property. And just because the city's, uh, increase was two and a half percent doesn't mean that your bill is going to go up two and a half percent, your bill could go up more than that. So, that, just want to make some, some, some clear points about the city's ability to raise revenue with taxation under Prop Two and a Half. There's been, um, discussion in the past, and certainly this time around in the budget process, about, um, not repaying, uh, OPEB or not paying, uh, pension liabilities, uh, or not paying them as aggressively or quickly as we have in the past. Um, please understand that the City of Lemester has an OPEB liability that I'm told by the comptroller is one hundred million dollars. None of this year's budget is being used to pay OPEB, for past OPEB. Obviously, we're paying current, uh, expenses, but not, we're not paying, paying for any catch-up on OPEB. Uh, we are no longer fully funded, uh, in our pension, uh, although we've done pretty well in the past, and at one point, uh, reached full funding because of investment experience in the market. We are not fully funded, and people should understand that, and the payments this year to our pension liability, uh, will, will not, will not, are paying, we are paying, i- in essence, for past liabilities. Uh, to use monies, uh, for, to essentially borrow, uh, by not paying back, uh, pension liability, uh, is simply paying, uh, those expenses at a higher rate. Uh, if you put your mortgage, uh, payment on a credit card, it might be expedient, but in the end, it will cost you more to deliver those, uh, to pay for that same, uh, 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 expense. By paying more for that expense, what's, what occurs is that you're, you're gonna have to ultimately reduce services to the residents of Lemester, as they are provided by all departments, schools, uh, D P W, police, fire. If, it stands to reason if you pay more for something, if it costs you more, uh, to pay a particular debt, then there will be less in the future to pay for future services, which is something traditionally Lemester's financial team has, has very strictly avoided. The last potential is to cut other departments. Uh, we've heard from other departments through your process, Mr. Chairman, uh, none of the departments are getting, uh, all that they asked for. Uh, the Fire Department talked about not only the need to replace a fire engine at a pretty hefty expense, uh, the need for a, a new North Lemester Fire Station, but they also talked very importantly about the, the burden to firefighters by working overtime shifts. The city, as, uh, many of us know, has, uh, relied on overtime with police and fire to keep staffing levels at a very low, low point, uh, because they, it is cheaper, in essence, to use overtime. They, they had to, uh, create new hires with all the concomitant benefits that go along with those new hires. The Fire Chief told us about how difficult it was on some of his men, because the overtime is getting burdensome, and, uh, he, of course, as well as the Police Chief, would like additional staffing, if they could get it. Uh, they are not gonna get it in this budget, and that's just a fact of life. There's been a suggestion about a one-twelfth budget. Um, the, if we pass the entire budget, obviously all these departments will have the full amount of the Mayor's budget to work with, not just a, uh, s- select amount of it. Uh, the process to administer, uh, a one-twelfth budget will be more difficult and will take more time. It will put a burden on everyone to reduce budgets, uh, in a way that makes sense. No one, see, Lemester, I don't believe in my memory, has ever done this. Uh, there will be, the comptroller did suggest that by not able, by not being able to pr- uh, front-end certain purchases with the full budget, that there may be some additional costs associated with this, and there is a whole penalty of issues that need to be faced, if in fact, that's what happened as a result of this process. I, I've left, uh, solutions for the end. Um, we all know, uh, the difficulties that every department in the city is facing, and certainly the schools are, uh, at the head of the list. Um, there is a great uncertainty as to what exactly the school year will look like, and I, I, I don't envy the Superintendent for the position that her and the entire school department would be in, to be planning around, uh, the state protocols as they finally come down, whatever those might be. As the Mayor said, this is a temporary budget, uh, no one knows exactly, uh, it, what it will look like, uh, ultimately, but I think there are some potential strategies that we can use, uh, to assist the schools as we have in the past. Um, I, for one, uh, speaking for myself, uh, would be more than happy to work with the Superintendent. I've already had one very constructive conversation with her since last Wednesday's hearing, to talk about, uh, using city funds for one-time expenses. I know in two thousand seventeen, we had to trim some payroll, and we did that, and the city at that time, uh, paid out of stabilization the unemployment, uh, charges that come from trimming, trimming staff, uh, thus saving the school department those expenses, and netting the school department whatever the benefit was from those, uh, eliminated salaries or eliminated, uh, benefits. There are also a number of other potential one-time expenses that could be associated with school activities, ranging from P P E, Chromebooks, or other technology that, uh, I would be happy, uh, to take a look at and lobby, uh, for that. Uh, we don't know how many kids we'll be transporting with respect to school transportation. As I mentioned the other night, uh, we do, uh, very typically give the school department the Medicaid reimbursement, the Mayor appropriates it, and we provide it. Uh, we also typically, uh, make up the difference, uh, on school transportation between whatever we budgeted, uh, originally, and, uh, added to that with the Medicaid reimbursement, there is typically a delta between those figures, and we have typically made that up as well. I do believe there are opportunities to work together, to find work, uh, good solutions to some of these problems and compromise, and I just wanted to mention, uh, that I would be happy, uh, to be doing those things, uh, working, uh, with the school department, and particularly the Superintendent, uh, to find opportunities, uh, to bridge, uh, some of these gaps. Um, I appreciate you, the opportunity to speak, uh, Mr. Chairman, I will now yield my time.
Very much. So Badanta, Councilor Frida, do you have any comment on C dash seventy-four?
I do, um, I'm gonna reserve some of them for the vote, but I just wanna, um, what I believe, clarify a couple of things. I think you as Finance Chair, uh, mentioned that this is a moving document, a living document, and we keep saying that it's, um, you know, it's, it's temporary, but the comptroller, I believe himself, said the other night, uh, during the hearings, that we need to put money into, uh, OPEB and, and, uh, pensions, uh, right in the beginning. So, if we vote for this budget tonight, and that four million dollars goes right into, uh, an account, and it goes into investments, there's not gonna be any negotiating with that. And then if we get down the road, and with the state numbers that come out, if we're shot in the, in some of the estimates, and the, the worst scenarios are coming out, maybe four to six million dollars short with the schools, that's the case, and we could use some of that money, then we have no way to access that. So, uh, uh, this isn't a total living document that, that's moving slowly, um, so, it's, people need to know that that four million dollars is not able to be touched, once it goes into that account. Um, and I also believe there was a line item, and I could be wrong, but I think there was a line item, um, with, uh, five million dollars plus or minus, that was for, uh, past OPEB unfunded liability. I think there was some, um, some in the past that we have paid for. So, um, I, I, I'm gonna reserve some of my comments, but I think we need to be clear to the public. Um, we also are looking at a, a Police Chief and a, and a Fire Chief, you know, who are looking, you know, for training funds for a Police Captain. I mean, we haven't, we haven't addressed those issues in years, and we can say that every year we try to do a little more, every year we do something, this is something that, that we do every year, this is not every year. This is a serious year with a lot of changes. There are a lot of changes for all of us, and, and in particular, the kids. There, and this is no fault of anybody. It's not the City Council's fault, it's not the Mayor's fault, it's not the Superintendent's fault, it's not the School Committee's fault. It's conditioned by, by the pandemic. And if these issues, i- if we have a stabilization account, and nobody fought for stabilization account more than me twenty-six years ago, because we had a Council who absolutely did not want a stabilization account open. It took us a couple of years for the Mayor to fight to get that stabilization, we finally got it through. But it was because I knew that every community needed to have, uh, uh, an amount in a, in a reserve fund in case there was an emergency. I don't know what constitutes an emergency, I mean, if this is an emergency, um, are we looking at earthquakes? Are we looking at, what are we looking at for an emergency? This is something that's serious, and this is something that's gonna, I gave up one shot at their education, one shot, and we need to be a little responsible, not, not just on the city side of, of the, uh, the budget, we also have to assist the School Committee. I, I have sat here for twenty-six years and listened every year, not enough money. Um, the, the school department is, should use their money a little wisely, a little differently. We've gone through over eight Superintendents in those years. It, it, if there's a common denominator here somewhere, every year we have the same issue, but every year we haven't had a pandemic. This is a year that really needs to be looked at a lot closer, and not tie up any of our money in case we need to access it. And if we don't wanna use stabilization, why do we not use, um, free cash? And from what I understand, the comptroller, I believe, said that the state has that, that free cash waiting to be certified, and we don't have it back yet. Um, let's use, what can we do to help this budget? And nobody's saying, don't put many money in OPEB, don't put four million dollars in OPEB, put two million dollars in OPEB. You know, be a little bit compromised, you wanna compromise, some of the compromise has to come on our side too. If we can't resolve these issues, my recommendation would, would be to see if we can get Destiny, the Department of Education, and D L S, the Division of Local Services, under D O R, have them facilitate a meeting with our Council, with the Mayor, with the School Committee, and with the, the Administration, and figure out, figure out what we're not doing right here, because this is no longer fair. This isn't fair to us, it isn't fair to the city, it's unfair to the kids. And we also need to tell the public, when we're talking about raising it two and a half percent, that's in the shift, the shift that, if people don't quite understand that, that if, if commercial properties are taking a drop because of conditions, then it goes to the residential side, so people's values and taxes differ. So, people are gonna have increased taxes just under two and a half percent itself. And yes, we could, we could raise taxes, but we can't just say that in order to help the school, the only way to do it is to raise the taxes and scare people, because that's not the only way. people, because that's not the only way. But this is the night that this budget, that this voted on, will raise people's taxes, and it's not gonna help the school department. We've got two situations here, but, and people need to know that. Every year in November or December, when we set the cla- tax classification, people come out in droves and say, I just got my tax bill. This is the time that people need to talk about the budget, and whether they want us to support it or not, because this is the time when we vote that raises their taxes. I have a few other things to say, but I'll reserve that to my, um, to, um, but, when we vote. So, thank you for, um, for the time to speak.
Counselor Frida, Counselor Dombrowski.
Uh, thank you. I, I do have some, uh, comments, but I'll, I'll make them, um, later on in the evening. I'd, I'd like to hear what people have to say at this point.
Okay. Counselor Shalhoub Zephyr?
Yes, thank you very much, uh, Councilor Cormier. I have a couple of questions. Um, is the mayor and the comptroller with us?
They should be. Um, Caitlin, have you identified their lines, Madam Clerk?
Not yet, but I can unmute to see if you'd like.
I'm not sure that the mayor is on the line. Um, the comptroller may be on the line. Uh, so, Madam Clerk, if you wanna unmute the lines to ask for, uh, either of them?
The lines are unmuted.
Comptroller Richards, are you on the line?
Yes, I am.
Okay. You got his line now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Head Counselor Shalhoub Zephyr?
Um, thank you very much. I have a couple of comments and then, and then a couple of questions for the comptroller. So, I just wanted to, um, go back and revisit, uh, revenue sources, because in addition to, um, the tax levy and this chapter seventy, the city also has, um, revenue from local receipts. Those include, um, excise tax, hotel tax, various licenses, and permits.
Correct.
And for FY nineteen, uh, that total of local receipts was a little over twelve million dollars. So, that never gets mentioned, and I think it's very important for people to understand that local receipts, um, are significant and, um, should be considered as part of our revenue. And then also, in terms of the OPEB contributions, I have the budget right here in front of me, and, um, we, there, there are numerous, um, line items for, um, OPEB co- OPEB contribution. Line number, uh, twelve forty-five is, um, what is that? That is the pension's unfunded, um, OPEB liability, and for this year, it's four point seven million. So, that's included in the budget. There's another four point six million dollar OPEB contribution for active employees. There's a post-employment other OPEB, um, line item in the budget for one point three million, as well as an OPEB Medicare supplemental insurance request for eight hundred and forty thousand. So, I just wanted to point those out, because I was confused about an earlier comment that there wasn't any OPEB included in this budget, because I found several million dollars. So, um-
No, I think, Counselor, if I could just-
Oh, okay. Thank you, John, 'cause I was going right to you next.
Okay, okay. I, I just wanted to answer that. I think Counselor Baudanza was correct in that there is no money in there for OPEB unfunded liability payments. There is money in there for OPEB for active employees. So, what, uh, you know, we have, you know, a lot of employees, over a thousand employees, and they're incurring expense of retirement's health insurance. So, what that is, it's paying for the expense at the current, uh, for the current fiscal year, so things do not get worse. And because we pay at that level, we save tens of millions of dollars in unfunded liability, because we are able to use a higher discount rate. So, it took us ten years to get there, and it will save all the departments, including the school department, literally hundreds of millions of dollars because of that. And it, all it's doing is paying the expenses that you're incurring. Of course, everybody would like to incur inspecs- expenses and not pay for it, but that isn't the tax that we utilize here in the city of Leominster. So, C- Counselor Baudanza was correct in his-
Okay, well, John, you know what? Okay, I, I'm looking at the budget, and there were two different line items. Under unfunded liability cost, pension slash OPEB, this is line number twelve forty-five, it says pension slash OPEB unfunded liability for four point seven million. On the next page, there is an OPEB contribution, line number twelve fifty-eight, of four point six million.
That's for the a- yeah, that's for the active employees. The four million six thirty is for the active employees' OPEB. It's not for retired, it's not for retirement unfunded liability. It's for the active. And the, uh, OPEB above that is going to be utilized solely for pension unfunded liability. There is no money going towards OPEB unfunded liability.
You know, could you, uh, I'm confused, I'm sorry. Could you explain the difference between those two again?
Between-
The four, the four point seven, OPEB unfunded liability is for?
Is for pension unfunded liability. It is, is going to be used for the pension unfunded liability.
Okay. And then the OPEB contribution of four point six three million is active employ- is what?
Yeah. Is, is the pen- is the OPEB cost related to active employees?
Pension.
Including, for instance, including city councillors. But all these- Well, that's for OPEB.
Okay.
For active employees. So, all these school employees, all these city employees, and elected officials.
Okay.
Your, the city is incurring an, an expense every year. You're earning that benefit, and the city is paying for it.
Okay, and that's in this year's budget. I just want, I just wanted to clarify that.
That's in this year. Yes.
Okay, okay. Next question for you, John. In the, um, the municipal report that was provided today, there's fourteen, a little over fourteen million dollars that has not been spent this year. It's available to spend. So, my question to you, yeah, correct, is how, how much of that is actually going to be spent? And how much will not be necessary, because obviously, lots of buildings were closed down. There's a lot of expense money that was not spent, and won't need, be needed.
It's hard to say, but, uh, historically, we have, uh, on a good year, it'll be one percent of the budget. So, it, it could be between eight hundred thousand and one point three million.
So, you, so you think thirteen million of that will be spent?
Oh, absolutely. There's, including, you know, the school department and everything. The school department will not close out any money. So, anything you see in the school department will be carried forward, for instance. But, um, yes, there's still, you know, we have three warrants in July, and then we have encumbrances for all the projects that, uh, are still haven't been completed. So-
What, what's the date for the encumbrances? When does that have to be in?
Well, we try to get them in after they pay their last warrant, but sometimes, they work on it. So, July fifteenth is the last day they can submit bills.
Okay. Okay. Uh, it, I have a question for the mayor. Is he on the phone? I mean, is, is he tuned in? I think it's a question for the mayor.
I don't have him listed, but I can unmute again to see if he's joined us.
Okay. Thank you, John. Mister Mayor, are you on the phone right now? What's the word, is the mayor on the phone right now?
Mayor on the line?
I don't know.
I'm gonna take that as a no.
I, I don't-
I'm sorry, Shalhoub Zephyr.
He's on currently. I don't know if he'll join us, but-
Okay. Well, you know, I do, I do have a question for him, and I'll put it out there right now, so hopefully, I don't know if he'll hear it, and he can join us later for the discussion. But, um, in the mayor's budget book, and we've heard over and over again that this is a temporary, a temporary budget, or a preliminary budget, because obviously, we don't know the state numbers. We don't know the state aid numbers. So, my question is, so if the city council passes this temporary or preliminary budget, and then in a month or two, we get the chapter seventy, um, numbers and other local aid numbers, um, does this, does the preliminary budget that the city council passed come back to the city council as a final budget for approval, once the state aid numbers are known? That's my question.
I can answer that. I can answer that. Uh, no, it wouldn't be-
John?
What will be put before you are the cuts. Or the additions, if it's that way.
So, once this preliminary budget, this is, I'm talking with the comptroller, correct, John?
Correct, yes, yep.
Okay, thank you. So, once this preliminary or temporary budget with unknown state aid numbers is acted upon by the city council, it becomes basically the final budget. When the state numbers are known and distributed to the city of Leominster, the city council will have no opportunity to weigh in on that, no approval necessary. However, any reduction to the budget or addition to the budget would come before the city council. Is that right, John?
Yes, that's, that's correct. You, you're approving the budget tonight, as presented. Until the mayor takes action, that's the budget. And, um, right now, as it stands, the only thing that we're waiting for are state aid numbers.
Right.
So, that, that would have to go before the city council.
The changes, any, any, um, increases or subtractions?
Correct, yes.
All right, thank you very much. I have other comments, um, Counsel, but I will reserve those for our discussion.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counsel Shalhoub Zephyr. Uh, Counsel Fekley?
Yes, I have a couple of comments, and then I have a question for the comptroller. Um, so, I was very heartened to hear the council president indicate that, um, he had had a conversation with the superintendent, um, regarding the possibility of using stabilization, uh, for one-time school department expenses, uh, including PPE, which obviously is very important expense, um, at this time. And, uh, you know, I'm, I'm very grateful that he has indicated that he would be willing to work with the school department regarding that. But, you know, the mayor will have to send that down to us, and I would actually like to hear from the mayor, um, what his level of support is going to be to use stabilization funds for these expensive, expenses and any other expenses that will come up, um, before school starts or during the school year, especially if our aid is cut. So, I, I mean, if the mayor could join us later, you know, when we were having our discussion, I would appreciate that. I would like to hear it from him. The other thing is, I have a question for, um, Mister Richard. Mister Richard, the other night, um, we were discussing free cash, one of the councils was mentioning it, and you said that, um, free cash is already spent. So, I'm wondering if you can define that for me, because, you know, obviously, we haven't gotten any, um, a request for appropriation of free cash, and I don't wanna assume unless you tell me that that's, that this is the situation, that it's because we are going to be repaying amounts that we have already appropriated out of stabilization fund.
That would be correct.
Okay. So, everything that we have appropriated, that we have approved out of stabilization fund, is gonna be repaid by free cash, and in that instance, our free cash is gone? That assumption was supposed to make?
That remains to be seen, that remains to be seen, if it is, all will be exhausted. But my recommendation probably would be to put, uh, a good amount of free cash into the stabilization, so that it, as it has been in the past, been utilized on the front end, so that you could use it. Because you wouldn't probably want, if there was some, uh, available, you probably wouldn't want to, um, let it just exhaust, uh, close out into the new fiscal year.
Okay. All right, so that, that clarify-
So, can you follow that?
Yeah, that clarifies that a little bit. Okay. All right, I have some other comments and questions, but I, too, am going to reserve them for the discussion portion of this meeting. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Counselor Fekley. I believe the only other one, uh, so far that has, is Counselor Ardinger?
It's terrible being last, because all the good questions have been asked. Uh, but I appreciate the opportunity, and I'm really gonna defer, but I would like to make one comment. Uh, you know, as we all have, we've heard a lot from, uh, various, you know, uh, people in the community, both, uh, on the telephones and via emails, and the input that I've received from a number of different people has just been fantastic. And, uh, I just wanna thank everybody for, you know, participating in the process and letting their thoughts be known to, uh, us as the city council. I think it's very important that we have their, their input. Uh, we can talk numbers, but the emotional aspect of it is, is quite, uh, quite positive also. So, thanks to the public for their input. And that's all I have to say. Mister President, or Mister Chairman, thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Counselor Ardinger. I will ask one more time if anybody from the city council has any other thoughts or questions before I, I go to the audience.
Mister Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, Counselor, Counselor Pauline Cormier, I believe. Go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mister Chair. Um, John, just one question that, that, that's come up to me, a- and has been brought up to me, is that, the, can you explain how the teachers' retirement differs from the city retirement?
Yes. Fortunately for the city, the state assumes the total liability with the teachers.
Okay.
So, they're not, they're not part of, uh, a city expense. It's all the non-teachers that are part of the city retirement system, and they make up approximately thirty percent of our retirement system. That would be the custodians, the clerical, and others.
Okay.
But teachers are fully, they're fully expensed and paid by the state.
Okay. All right, thank you very much. That, that makes a big difference.
Yeah, it saves a lot of money.
Okay.
Mister, Mister, I'm sorry. Mister Chairman?
Yes, Counselor Angelini?
Uh, yes, if I may, now that the comptroller's, uh, participating in the discussion, um, I, I have a question that was generated, uh, by a comment from one of my colleagues this evening, and I'm sure we're all aware, this is an emergency. The, the president declared an emergency, the governor, the mayor, um, but Mister Richard, I recall during your testimony last week, um, I mean, with dire projections for rev- the revenue side this year, but you did reference that the conditions may be more dire in the next fiscal year. Could you explain that a little bit?
Well, I think it was the mayor who brought up the point where, uh, either, I think, are the mass taxpayers. There's people out there that think it will take four to five or more years to reach what our normal was before this happened. And our experience has been recessions have lasted for at least four years. And that's the issue. And our biggest revenue source is the tax levy. And if we, you know, have problems with that collection, it really impacts the city's cash flow and its ability to provide services. So, yes, it's- Yes, it's a, it's a multi-year event. It isn't just one year.
I, I'm hearing the same thing. I, I, I talked to a lot of businessmen all over the country in the course of my daily, uh, routine. And, and there's, no one seems to, uh, be able to provide any clarity into the future. I know banks are hesitant to issue, uh, or to write, uh, CNI loans, commercial industrial loans right now. Um, so, the fact that, you know, we make an expenditure this year, we dip in, uh, and next year's gonna be fine, I think, I personally don't believe that's the case. And I think we, uh, we have to batten down the hatches and, and prepare for some, uh, for maybe two or three tough years. So, I think it'd be prudent to, uh, keep that in mind as well. Thank you, Mr. Uh, Mr. Chairman. And I thank the comptroller for his time as well.
Thank you very much, Councilor Angelini. Is there anybody else from the city council that has any final thoughts or questions before I go to the public? Okay, seeing none, uh, Madam Clerk, if you can, uh, begin to open up all of the lines. And anybody who is on the phones, if you can make sure that, uh, your background noise is very quiet, all the lines are gonna be open, so to, uh, that we can have public...
Mr. Chairman, did you want to give the, uh, superintendent the courtesy of speaking first?
All right.
Do you want to give the superintendent the courtesy of speaking first?
Absolutely. Um, so while the city's opening the lines, uh, Superintendent on, on the line?
Yes, I am.
C- seventy-four, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me, Mr. President?
Yeah, just the clerk's gonna mute the rest of the phones, so you can get a, can hear you clearly.
Thank you.
Are you in the process of doing that, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I am.
Give us one more moment. Okay.
Oh, here we go.
Quiet now.
Can you hear me, Mr. President?
Yes, we can.
Yes, uh, this is with, uh, um, Mr. Councilor Cormier's public hearing, so if he's gonna direct, uh, uh, I'm sure he'll ask you to proceed.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, this is Superintendent Paula Deacon, and I live at thirteen Lexington Circle, Leominster, Massachusetts. Just briefly, I'd like to state that my hope for this evening, beyond being productive, being positive, and being respectful for all city departments, is that the council recognizes the influence and impact education has on our children. The students of Leominster deserve an exceptional education, with exceptional opportunities to be able to accomplish whatever their goals may be. What's in front of you for consideration is the current level of service we provide. There are no requests for additional staff, no new initiatives, no building projects, only the current cost of doing school business. Because we are faced with such unprecedented circumstances, I ask you to reflect upon what's truly essential. For me, that's, that's really easy, so easy. It's my staff and it's my students. Our kids need us more than they ever have. Our kids need our commitment and support. We are the safety net. We are the role models, and we can't let them down. I ask for consideration in keeping our school district whole, in supporting and providing for every child in every classroom, every single day. To pass a budget without any commitment of funding leaves much to debate. The school department has to responsibly respond to reality. We did that. We need our officials to make decisions based on what we currently know, not on what possibly could be. I ask for careful consideration around this budget and as we move forward, because it's the responsible thing to do for the children of Leominster. And I thank you for your time this evening. Thank you, Mr. Cormier.
Thank you, um, uh, Superintendent Deacon. Would anybody else from the public like to speak on C dash seventy-four? Madam Clerk, if you can open up the lines, uh, if, if anybody's on from the public that would like to speak, uh, in favor of C dash seventy-four, please, your name and address for the record?
Councilor Cormier, um, as to the word logging in earlier, I did have Erin O'Toole will sign up second, and Eileen Griffin will sign up third for speaking on this topic.
Okay, sure. Who would this, Madam Clerk?
Uh, first, it would be Erin O'Toole.
Okay, Erin O'Toole, are you on the line?
Hi, yes, I am.
Okay. If you would like to go ahead, um, regarding C dash seventy-four?
Sure, did you want me to wait until you said the question about not in favor of, or do you want me just to continue?
You can continue, that's fine.
Okay. Um, good evening, I am proud to say that this past Friday, oh, I'll, I'll, I'm sorry, first. Erin O'Toole, sixty-six Lawrence Street, Clinton, Massachusetts. Um, good evening, I am proud to say that this past Friday, I completed my thirteenth year as a teacher at Fallbrook Elementary School. I love my job. I love my school. I love my coworkers, but I love my kids the most. I can say that in the past... I can say that in my past sixteen years, I have never felt more passionately to speak for the students, because based on the budget that is being presented for the school department, our mayor has forgotten the children. The past three and a half months have been extremely taxing on our student population. Teachers, paraprofessionals, and tutors have worked tirelessly to support students during the global pandemic. We have called, emailed, driven to homes and dropped off materials, had Zoom meetings and G-meets. We do this because we love our jobs and we love our students. However, when our students need us the most, when the, need the mayor to support them this fall, he is failing them more than ever. The school department cut more than a hundred and forty teachers, tutors, and paraprofessionals over the past two weeks due to this budget. How are we going to meet the needs of hundreds of students in our city without these dedicated paraprofessionals, tutors, and teachers? The social, emotional wellness of our students is at and will continue to be at a crisis level for many months to come. How will we meet these needs when we don't have the staff to do so? When the school, when will the school department not be the first on the budget chopping block? When will the needs of the students be put at the top of the list? How more does it, more serious does it need to become beyond a global pandemic for children to be put first? Before you vote this evening, please think of the students. They need you more than ever before. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, the other one I have, uh, on the line is school committee, uh, chairman, uh, Eileen Griffin. If you would like to go ahead?
Thank you, um, Mr. Cormier. Um, Eileen Griffin, one thirty-five Highland Ave. Um, you know, we have worked tirelessly, um, and a path off to the superintendent, her administrative team, and our finance subcommittee to make the most transparent budget. This is, I've been on the committee for many years. We know where every single penny is going. Um, and we need every single one of those pennies. Um, the most important priority for us is to keep teachers in the classroom. Um, we want our students to be successful, not only in school, but in life. Um, strong education, uh, strong school system, support a strong, um, economy within, um, the city. Um, we need to do justice for our students. Um, so we hope that we can be creative together to come up with solutions, um, so that we can meet the needs of our students, all of our students. Um, we have lots of mandates for our special ed students that we need to adhere to. Um, given this pandemic, families have been stressed. Um, they've been in positions of, um, educating at home with the help and support of all their teachers. Um, we need Chromebooks desperately. Every single child needs to have a Chromebook, because our way of teaching is going to be, um, different. We're going to have, to have some remote learning of some kind. Um, and families can't just juggle one Chromebook per family. Every student needs their own. Um, so we need support with that. We need support with PPEs. Um, and I think there are creative ways for us to get those items paid for, so that we can free up other money, um, to rehire some of the teachers and other, um, staff that we had to unfortunately clean slip. Nobody wanted to do that. We want them all back. Um, but it's all gonna be dependent upon the budget. So, we ask that everyone work together, be creative, and support the students of Leominster. Thank you.
Thank you very much, uh, Eileen. Uh, Madam Clerk, was there anybody else that, uh, said that they wanted to speak at the hearing, or no?
Nobody else signed up, but there are many people on that I wasn't able to get to.
Okay, so first, I will go to members of the audience, uh, once again, and I will ask, anybody in the audience would like to, in favor, C dash seventy-four? Name and address?
No.
Would anybody else like, in favor?
Yes, I would.
Okay, please state your name and address?
Bonnie Budd, three twenty-one Prospect Street. I just want to say...
Just hold on one moment, and the clerk can shut the other lines down, so we can hear you.
Okay.
Have you identified the line, Madam Clerk?
There you go, it should be good now.
Okay.
Okay.
Please state your name again and your address. I apologize.
No problem. Bonnie Budd, three twenty-one Prospect Street, Leominster.
Okay, thank you.
I just want to say thank you to everybody, um, present tonight for this budget, for looking at this budget before you. Um, I implore you to please pass every penny that's before you. Um, and I implore you to appropriate anything coming down the line for the students who need it most. And I also wanted to thank, uh, Claire Frida for speaking up on behalf of the students, and I think saying was on everybody's mind, that, you know, the time is now to help everybody out with education and putting it first. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Bonnie. Would anybody else in the public like to speak in C dash? State your name and address for the record? Once again, would anybody in the public like to speak in favor, C dash seventy-four? State your name and add the record? Is somebody on the line that wants to speak in favor?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay, please state your name and address for the record?
Sure, my name is Carrie Knowsworthy, and I live at ninety twelfth St. Street. Oh, I just wanted to make sure you could hear me.
I can hear you, uh, very clearly. You, are you all set, Madam Clerk, with the line?
You should be all set now.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, Carrie. Thank you.
Hi, thank you. Um, I basically wanted to echo, uh, the sentence, the statement of Bonnie Budd. I wanted to thank the councilors for all the time and effort putting forth, uh, you're putting forth on such a difficult budget during such a difficult year. I too wanted to thank Councilor Claire Frida. I felt like she was saying exactly what I was thinking, and I want to applaud her for her, um, efforts in advocating and talking about the needs of the schools. Um, and I also, as was mentioned a few times, I mean, every kid needs a Chromebook and access to the internet and IT support. We need to make sure our teachers also have access to technology and the internet, because I've been hearing that some people, teachers who have young children of their own, um, you know, if they don't have their own technology and their children are utilizing the technology, then they can't teach their class. If they don't have good internet, then the class ends. And I did just want to mention, uh, again, uh, children with special needs, they are our most vulnerable. But besides that, we do have federal and state laws, IDEA, and that we need to be in compliance with. So, besides the moral and ethical piece, you know, I just want to make sure that we're in compliance with these laws now, so that later on, we don't get fined or lose things from GFC, because we didn't, um, you know, make sure that those children were prioritized. So, thank you again. I know it's a difficult time, and I appreciate everyone's efforts. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Carrie. Um, once again, would anybody in the public like to speak in favor? C dash seventy-four, please state your name and address for the record?
I would.
Yes, Ed?
My name is Amanda Smith. I live at one forty-seven Ridgemad Drive. Tonight, I would implore all of you to approve the superintendent's budget as it was presented last week, and for the school appropriations, um, to be able to be approved following this meeting tonight, and that we take into severe consideration our students' future. Uh, as I mentioned several times tonight, children's social and emotional well-being. Um, this pandemic has brought about a lot of trauma for a lot of our kids. Um, and we need to really assess that. They need all the teachers' backs, fully staffed, our students' needs to return to school. They need their therapies. They need art and music. They need their one-to-one parent teacher. They need to be able to have all of these resources that they've had for all these years. And we need to ensure that we're properly funding our teachers in order to provide these services that are so valued to our students. And I really hope that the, that tonight, we take this under consideration, um, and do what's in the best interest of our kids, and provide that high-quality education we all strive for.
Okay, thank you very, very much. Would anybody else in the public like to speak in favor of C dash seventy-four?
Yes.
I would.
Yes.
Please state your name and address for the record?
Jasmine Tadel, thirty-four Second Street.
Hey, thank you, Jasmine.
Uh, I would just like to follow up with everybody else's comments, and thanking, uh, Ms. Frida for her support and for all of the hard work that the superintendent and all of her staff has done to support our kids. And just to maybe remind everybody that when these kids go back to school, A, things are all gonna be different for them, and B, by the time they go back, they'll have been out of school for six months. Special needs kids and regular kids are gonna need extra, extra support, because they ha- will have regressed in so many ways, and transitioning back after being gone for that long is going to be exceedingly difficult for them. And we need every single body to be there to support these kids in every way possible. And again, I just want to thank everybody for their time and their efforts, and I really hope they pass the budget.
Thank you very, very much, Jasmine. Uh, would anybody else like to speak in favor of C dash seventy-four?
Yes, I would.
Go ahead. State your address for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes. State your name and address for the record?
My name is...
Madam Clerk, have you identified the line?
I have not yet. He hasn't talked long enough for me to grab him yet.
Could you please state your name and address for the record? Whoever would like to speak, please state your name and address for the record?
All right, um, sir, who was trying to speak? Can you try to speak again one more time? I think I may have found your line.
Whoever, whoever would like to speak, please state your name and your address for the record?
My name is Ronnie Moore.
Hey, Ron.
I live on three sixty. Can you hear me?
Yes, yes. And go ahead. We hear you nice and clearly.
All right. I live on three sixty. I'm also on Leominster, I represent Ward two, A, B, and C. I want to impress upon you that you need to pass the superintendent's budget. It's im- it's imperative that you do so. Everybody's talking about the pandemic. I have strong feelings that the results of the pandemic, we won't know it for another three or four years, the effect on the students, the teachers, and the city of Leominster. I got an email here from Mass, and he was in the middle of a Mass dot meeting this afternoon, and they had just voted a twenty twenty-one budget. Totally the budget's temporary, going along the same lines of the one twelve budget. Everything is a, is a moving target. The biggest problem we're gonna have if the kids go back to school is the cost. Everything is a, is a moving target. The biggest problem we're going to have if the kids go back to school is the cost. With the PPEs, the busing, how the kids are going to be in school, uh, it's going to cost a lot of money and a lot of emotional time. I strongly believe we need to pass the budget, the superintendent's budget. We can't afford to do any cuts. Yes, we had to, had to lay off many teachers, but we got to bring them back. The cost, the cost to the kids, the cost to the teachers, the cost to the city is high. It's even more higher if we do nothing. We have, we have to act and we have to look at the vulnerability that it's going to cost us even more. That's what we have to realize, unfortunately. This pandemic, we're, right now, we're in the middle of the first wave. We don't know what's going to happen with the second wave. I hate being a Cassandra, a, a doom, but I'm here to tell you, we ain't seen nothing yet. We need to, we need to pass the superintendent's budget, as difficult as that way be. That's it.
Okay, thank you, Ron. Once again, I will ask, would any member of the public like to? Favor of the budget that is in the city council currently, C dash seventy-four?
Councilor Cormier, Councilor Cormier, I'm sorry, Councilor Cormier, this is Councilor Beckley. Can I just interject for a moment? I'm sorry, I know this is for the public, but I think this is an important comment that the public needs to hear.
Sure, Councilor Beckley, you can say something quick.
Okay. Um, the past few callers has, have asked us to pass the superintendent's budget. I think it needs to be made clear to the public that we cannot pass the superintendent's budget. We can only pass what the mayor has presented to us. I think that we need to make that clear to the public moving forward with any other phone calls or comments.
Yes, th- thank you, Councilor Beckley. I, I would, I'd sum that up, uh, you know, but yeah, we, we will discuss that. Okay, would anybody else from the public like to speak in favor of C dash seventy-four? Once again, would anybody else in the public like to speak in favor of C seventy-four?
Mr. Chairman, uh, just hold one second. I think, I think the, uh, clerk had to take a quick break, and she should be out, back on the line momentarily. Make sure that the lines are unmuted before you call again.
Okay, all right, yeah, I, I wait a moment then.
Sure, oh, good. Do you want to say no, please? Do you want to, no? I have had the word-
She should be with us for a moment thoroughly. Thank, thank you for the, thank you for that comment, uh, Councilor Beckley. I think that's important, um, people understand that.
Can everybody, can hear conversations in the background? Okay, i- is, is the clerk back on the line?
She is. She's back now, just back.
Okay. Hey, Madam Clerk, are all the lines open?
I just muted all the lines. It's all set.
I think, well, you need to open them, I guess.
Need them unmuted?
They're all unmuted, Mr. President?
Thank you very much. Would anybody else in the public like to speak? In favor of C seventy-four?
Yes, I would.
Basically, state your name and address.
My name is Mary Caffarella.
Oh, that was, they had, um-
Hold on one moment, I think you said Mary, until the city clerk reached the line.
Sorry, I'm trying to get some of the noise in the line to the background off. All right, Mary, could you speak again for me, please?
Yes, my name is Mary Caffarella. I live at four Prospect Terrace.
Okay, thank you, Mary, go ahead.
I understand that you have to, you can't approve this superintendent's budget the way that it's written. However, I think that you need to put pressure on the mayor to rescind his current budget proposed to reflect that of the superintendent and the school committee. I have two students who are in the high school. They both are in the band. I don't know if you're aware, but their band director has been given a pink slip. But what this band director has done for this, for this group in just one year is amazing. He does not deserve this. Neither do any of the other teachers, or the assistant teachers, the parents. None of them deserve what is being done. I think as a whole, you need to come together and put pressure on the mayor to do what is right, not what he wants, but what the students, the teachers, and the schools need. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mary. Would anybody else in the public like to speak in favor? Favor of the-
Tell people they can't speak English, they dark on itself, but the band people, everybody's, what about all the kids?
Excuse me, people mute, they, if we have an open line, we can hear conversations in the back.
Yeah, and I don't understand why it's in the public. I don't know, I don't interact with people there.
Okay, would anybody like to speak in favor of C dash seventy-four? Please state your name and address for the record?
Why would, um-
Once again, would anybody like to speak in favor of C dash seventy-four? Please state your name and address for the record? For the third and final time, would anybody else like to speak in favor of C dash seventy-four? Please state your name and address for the record? Would anybody else like to speak in opposition to C dash seventy-four? Name and address for the record?
Yes.
Please state your name and address?
What? Leah Burns, fifty-seven Colonial Drive.
Uh, just give us one second, Leah, until the clerk quiets the lines down.
Sure. So, so Morgan, so Morgan had you over and her brother had you-
Hey, Madam Clerk, have you identified the line?
Yes, I have, and it should be all set to start speaking.
Oh, go ahead, Leah, thank you.
Hi, thank you to the city council. I'd like to make this statement as the president of the LEI, a taxpayer and a parent. For the last couple of weeks, I've had conversations with other presidents from central Mass locals about their respective budget situations. Obviously, this pandemic has affected us all, and we all wait for more concrete numbers from the federal and the state government and encourage our members to advocate with those legislators. Um, however, we also acknowledge that this is going to be an ongoing issue. But the fight at the local level seems uniquely Leominster. As Councilor Frida stated earlier, at what point do we identify an emergency if not now? While other districts have expressed that cuts have been or will be avoided through city support and aren't on the radar, we seem to be placing the burden of the pandemic squarely on the students of Leominster. We need to decide that their experience is more important than a bond rating. We need to decide that we are not comfortable with ballooning class sizes and a bleeding out of incredible instructional talent from the city. We need to make safety and technology in all its forms a priority. Compliance with the law for our diverse populations and basic maintenance for our aging buildings was a major concern of our budget, and we refuse to accept that these are dream numbers. But rather than focus on what this means for our staff and our students going forward, the conversation has been directed by some towards health insurance shaming, threats of tax increases, and accusations of bad math in the school department once again. It is predictable and exhausting, but not productive for the six thousand students that are serviced by Leominster Public Schools and their families. I respectfully request that the city council does not accept the budget at this time and we revisit, as allowed by state timeline, how to best support all departmental requests in Leominster. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, would anybody else in the public like to speak in opposition to C dash seventy-four? Please state your name and address for the record? Madam Clerk, are all the lines going to seem quiet?
I would.
Uh, Brandon Robbins, two twenty-five Leggett Hill Road.
Brandon Robbins, thank you.
Let, let-
Leah, close. It's good, it's going to stop trying to silence you.
Okay, Brandon, I, it's nice and quiet now, go ahead.
Perfect, uh, thank you, Councilor Cormier. Uh, I first want to thank all of you guys here for how difficult these past couple of weeks have been. Uh, at last week, uh, budget hearing, uh, and many of those before me have made it clear that it is critical that we make education a priority here in Leominster. We all know that the future of our city depends upon the education of our children today. And in my opinion, Leominster has some of the best and brightest students, teachers, staff, and family. Providing each and every one of them with the tools and resources they need to be successful is how we, as a city, can accomplish this. While there are still many unknowns due to the COVID nineteen pandemic and the lack of figures from the state, we do know that because of a pandemic, a significant impact will be made on revenue, thus very likely impacting, um, placing a significant burden on our public education. Because of this, it is critical that as a community, we take action to show our students, teachers, staff, and taxpayers of Leominster that education is our priority. As you vote on the budget tonight, I ask that you vote your conscience and that you support our students and teachers in FY twenty-one and beyond. Thank you again.
Thank you very much, Brandon. Madam Clerk, can you open up the lines again, please?
They are now all open again?
Anybody in the public like to speak?
Isabel Lara?
Mission C dash seventy-four?
Isabel Lara?
Would anybody in the public like to speak in opposition to C dash seventy-four?
Uh, Councilor Cormier- I would. Isabel Lara is, uh, Lara is trying to speak. I just have to identify her line.
Okay, hold on one moment. Ed, we'll get Isabel, um, line identified.
Isabel, can you try speaking for me again so I can get you?
Yes, Caitlin, thank you so much.
Perfect, I found her. We should be all set.
Thank you very much. Go ahead, Isabel.
Uh, thank you, Councilor Cormier, uh, and thank you all for letting me speak this evening. Uh, what you are hearing and what you have heard in the past week or so is not just rhetoric. People's livelihoods and student futures are at stake in the decisions you are about to make this evening. The last time I spoke, I broke down all of the governmental options that would help us out of this financial situation, but they are unlikely to happen. Our only hope here is that the city increases its local aid contribution by using the stabilization fund to decrease the gap left by the likely decrease in chapter seventy-eight. This fund is used for emergencies, and as Councilor Frida stated, uh, a global pandemic should count as one. This would be the start of education being valued in the city. I know that's not up to you, Rabbit, the mayor, but there are some decisions you all could make this evening that are much more financially responsible than passing this budget. First, simply don't vote for it. The budget presented to you by the mayor is a six million dollar underfunding than what the school department proposed in a bare-bones manner to continue operating. A passage of his budget would result in even more layoffs in staff when we need them the most. Lastly, choose to wait until July thirty-first to pass the budget. This would give the state more time to prepare and propose its budget as a city, and we wouldn't even need to implement a one-twelve budget. I know there are many unknowns during this time, but funding our education system to the fullest should not be one of them. I am tired of continually begging certain members of this body for help and never getting any. I am tired of this comptroller who spews lies and misinformation, and I am tired by the mayor swooping in during our final hour to look like the savior and give us the money we asked for in the first place. I am sure this budget will pass tonight, unfortunately, but please vote your conscience and understand that by voting for this budget, you are hurting our students, our staff, and continuing to prove education is not valued in this community. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Isabel. Would anybody else in the public like to speak at this public hearing on C dash seventy-four? If you would like to speak in opposition, please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, please.
Yes, yes, yes.
Yes, I would.
Go, go ahead. Go ahead, one at a time. Who is the, state your name?
My name is Larry Zoro, and I live at eight Brentwood Drive.
Thank you very much, Larry. Go ahead.
Caller forty-one who's listening in on, is there TV, is talking about some people on the line, could you please mute your line? The person who says somebody is dumb is scum, could you please mute your line so we do not have to hear you in the background when others are speaking?
I, I've asked many times, and I, I don't think they comprehend. Um, can you identify Larry's line?
I have, and he should be all set.
Okay, go ahead, Larry.
Thank you so much. Uh, we are facing really, really tough time ahead. Uh, I was a music teacher in the city for seventeen years. Leominster has not supported its educational system in that time and continues not to support it. Um, there's some effects that will be going on with the school system if the, if this current budget is passed. The first grade at Northwest School currently only has four teachers and about a hundred and fifty students. That equals about thirty-seven kids in a class. Imagine thirty-seven desks in a classroom in a first grade, in a first grade situation. There is no school anywhere that can accommodate that many students in a room. And how is one teacher supposed to teach in that environment? And how are suppo- how are students supposed to learn? Currently, LCE has no teachers coming back this fall. I heard from one of the pink-flipped employees that every single teacher was pink-flipped at that school. These are individuals that work with some of the media students who need that one-to-one attention. The only employee that is slated to come back in the fall is the principal. Currently, there are eighty-two paraprofessionals that are pink-flipped. This will have major implications for our students. Many of our educators were with students who, who, are with students to keep in compliance with their individual education plan or five oh four plan. If Leominster schools opened as permanently constructed, we would have, we would be in serious violations of a plethora of the state, of state laws. I'd like the city council to review the chargeback. There is too much money being charged back to the school system that's taking away from our students. The healthcare shaming is shameful. What happened last week at the city council, it was shameful to be asking, why is healthcare costs going up? The teachers have earned the right to get some decent healthcare. And the reputation of our city, which was severely damaged in two thousand seventeen, is now going to be even more damaged. I work in another district, and when I go up to, when I go up to school, my, my colleagues who live in the district I work in all ask me, what is going on in Leominster? What is the matter with them? It's very, very sad. I'm very, very frustrated. My children deserve better, our children deserve better, and our teachers and school system deserve better. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much, Larry. Would anybody else in the public like to speak in position? C dash seventy-
I'd like to speak in opposition.
Okay, go ahead, state your name, please, and address.
Um, Rachel Barton, thirty-eight Russell Street, Littleton, Mass.
Hey, go, go ahead, Rachel.
Hi, sorry, no problem. Um, so for the past ten years, I have been a history teacher at Savy Middle School. Um, the fact that the budget that the superintendent proposed last week was considered a dream budget is just, in my mind, catastrophic, as is my class sizes, even without teacher cuts, were around twenty-eight, twenty-nine students. On average, about sixty-two percent of those were IEP students, and I was lucky if I would have one, maybe two paraprofessionals in the school helping me at that time. My classroom textbook set, of which I have about twelve for those twenty-nine students, was a textbook dated back to two thousand three. Um, the other textbook, which I- Um, the other textbook which I had, which would be available, I'd have about 32 copies, so enough for each kid, was 1996, and was a loner from the high school reading at the 10th grade level for eighth graders. Um, 25% of our teachers, not our paraprofessionals, not our tutors, our teachers, have been let go, as is 29 kids in my eighth grade history class before all of these cuts. I just can't even imagine what it is going to be like in the fall. I appreciate all your time and effort, and I urge you to send this budget back to the mayor to reflect that quote-unquote "dream budget" that the superintendent, um, put forward, because I can tell you right now, it is not a dream. It is completely bare bones as it is. So, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you very much. I believe there's another person. Would anybody like, else like to speak in opposition to C-74?
Yes, I would.
I would.
Please state your name and address for the record. Someone please state name and address for the record.
That's a Bible.
Okay, thank you, Melissa, hold on one second. Okay, it seems quiet, go ahead.
All right, hello, tonight I encourage you to vote against this budget as proposed or delay as the state has allowed.
Okay, is that it, Melissa?
We simply cannot anymore, we literally cannot afford it. Since 2007, I have spoken each year about simple goals for our school district: compliance, equity, and safety. With hope of the city council, there have been some improvements, but let's not forget how the school year started. Not enough funding, not enough staff, schools without proper custodial care that left our schools unclean and unhealthy. Decisions that had been made out of necessity had to be reversed, and I had hoped that we had learned. AC compliance and equity have remained an issue of being improved. Staff have gone out of our way to advocate and serve our kids, knowing the level of trauma, poverty, and need many are coming to school with. Our schools have been advocates of change as we fight systemic poverty issues that keep us minimally funded. Yet here we are again. Pinkflips have made all the weaknesses of our district greater. The mayor wrote in an email today, he has submitted a budget that will continue operation. You really believe that? This is continuing operation? There will be no deans day one despite thousands of interventions each year. We will reactively be paying for student resource officers through city chargebacks and not proactively intervening to avoid crisis. We will be cutting staff that will affect our impact on schools for years to come as we are still recovering from the 2017 losses. Some questions for you. Why aren't you using some of the city's stabilization account that has over $20 million in it to offset some potential revenue shortfalls caused by COVID? Why are we building up this reserve if we can never spend it? Emergency reserves are for emergencies. If a global pandemic is not an emergency, what is? Why isn't the city reducing their OPEB contribution in FY21 to help pay for current operations? The city has budgeted to appropriate $4.63 million. Why not take an OPEB holiday as other communities are doing in order to help fund current operations without impacting the tax rate? For how long have we heard about all of the money that the city will save? Will we ever get over a 1% to 2% minimum? There have been rumors of huge tax increases, that the schools or other departments get funding that they need. Instead of increasing taxes, why not increase local receipts closer to actual? By closing the gap, you may generate less free cash, but it will not impact taxpayers. You can still increase your budget with local receipts by a million to $2 million and generate free cash. Lastly, while I understand you cannot add to the budget, and many departments are incredibly tight-fisted with their budgets, there is room for review. Each time you look at $25,000 in Christmas lights, you can imagine the one-to-one aid that could have been brought back to help a special needs child that's legally obligated. Many years, you've had no room for budget vote. The state has given you many exceptions this year that you'll probably never see again. There is room and time for more details from the state. There's room to get answers about free cash and stabilization. We can and must do more. We cannot wait as we continue to lose staff on a daily basis to other districts. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Melissa. Would anybody else like to speak at the public forum on C-74? And would anybody else like to speak in opposition to C-74?
Yeah, Michael Stathen.
Michael Stathen, I believe I heard first.
Yep.
Okay. Can you speak again?
You're ready.
Can you identify your line?
Uh, Michael, can you just speak a sentence for me, or state your name again for me, so I can...
Yes, Michael Stathen.
I found you, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Mike.
All right, Michael Stathen, 893 Main Street. Leominster has the number one funded pension system in the state. It's an accomplishment, and we're number one by a mile. Number two isn't close. There are 351 municipalities in the Commonwealth, and consistently, year after year, our education budget is in the bottom 12. Budgets reveal what our priorities are. Clearly, our priority has been an aggressive funding of retirement, not education. The budget is funded to continue the system. We are told that every department is getting less because we anticipate less revenue, but in fact, the additional retirement contribution proposed in this budget is the number...
Is there anything from this?
Is the number from pre-COVID. So, the budget posted on the website does not have line item numbers, and some of the dollar figures that city councillors have quoted tonight do not match what I've seen. So my apologies if my numbers don't match what you have, but in the budget posted on the city website, in the retirement category, it says contributory retirement system, $1,940,042. That's what we're required to do. It says post-employment unfunded liability reserve, $6,382,662. That is the planned extra contribution towards unfunded liability. Not that long ago, we were told that we were 100% funded. Of course, as the comptroller said, that was a snapshot in time. That was a snapshot as of December 31st, 2017. We're now told that we're underfunded. That's also a snapshot in time. That's as of December 31st, 2018. Market was down 5% for '18. 2019, the market was up 20%. We haven't gotten that report yet, but we are back to fully funded. So, the comptroller is correct. If we do not put the full, and I believe the city council president also said this, if we do not put in the full $6.38 million, there are potentially some costs to that. There are also costs to failing to fully fund education. It's a matter of priorities. If you agree that retirement is more important than education in our best-funded retirement system, go ahead, pass this budget. But otherwise, I would suggest that, at least for the moment, if you're going to vote yes tonight, you at least eliminate the line, post-employment unfunded liability reserve, $6,382,662, because we've been told that will be spent on July 1st, and then you lose that flexibility. If you want to have a part in the conversation about what should be the priority, and what are the costs and benefits of spending all of that on retirement versus some of it on retirement and some of it on education, then I would advocate you eliminate that line. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michael. Would anybody else in the public like to speak in opposition to C-74? Please state your name and address for the record.
Linden Laundry, 5 North Meadow Road.
Hey, hold on one moment. Madam Clerk, did you identify that line?
Yes, just give me one moment before you can use the latter line. All right, it should be okay to start.
Good, madam. Can you state your address again for the record? Your name?
Yes, my name is Linden Laundry, 5 North Meadow Road. Um, I just wanted to say thank you to the councillors.
In Leominster?
Yes, 5 North Meadow Road, Leominster.
Okay, thank you, go ahead.
Sure. Um, I just wanted to say thank you, uh, for allowing me to speak, and thank you, um, also to Councilor Frida for your honest and real account of the situation that we're facing. Um, and I just wanted to say that in conversations I've had with the mayor over the last few days, he's made sure to point out that this was a, um, temporary budget that he was looking to put forth in, um, while we wait for state aid, and I just wanted to suggest that if this is an option to wait until 7/31, um, I guess it's a question, why, why not wait until, um, the delay is allowing us for the state? That way, we can find out what state aid would be and, uh, use that time to better put forth, um, effort into finding a responsible way to fund the schools properly. Um, that's it, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak in opposition to C-74? Once again, would anybody else from the public like to speak in C-74? For the third and final time, would anybody else from the public like to speak in opposition I will, um, take this back to the city council. Um, I would just like to, once again, thank you, Councilor Feckley, for jumping in. I was gonna, you know, mention this as well, uh, that Chapter 44, Section 32 of Massachusetts General Law, as well as Article 6 of the City of Leominster's Charter, as most people, I think, know, but I'm gonna, I'm going to explain again, they prevent us from adding any money to this budget. Um, we, we cannot vote on the budget that the school committee has requested, nor can we vote on any budget that any other department has requested. You can only vote on the bottom line, on the number that the mayor has sent to us, uh, to vote on, and all we can do is, is cut that. Um, you know, it seems as though, what Mass. General Law, Chapter 44, Section 32, and our Charter, Article 6, it seems as though what they do is, you know, if we had a situation where we had a mayor, um, that, you know, liked to spend money like it was going out of style, the city council can keep it in check. And we don't have that problem, obviously, in Leominster. We hear what people are saying, they want us to spend more, that's what they're asking. And the law does not allow us to spend more. So, um, you know, I just wanted to clarify that. So, before I close this public hearing, um, I will ask, does any, does either member of finance have any final comments or thoughts before I close this public hearing? Councilor Cormier, Councilor Angelina?
Um, this is Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yeah, go ahead.
I would just like to, uh, let everybody know that we're listening, we're hearing them, and I appreciate the people that have offered solutions, and, and, and their thoughts on how to possibly solve things. We, I appreciate that input. Um, like you said, we're very limited as to what we can do, but I thank everybody who took the time, and all the speakers who came out, to put a face on this, to put the children's faces on this, so that we all understand and get a better picture. And also to thank those who took the time to say, hey, here's some options to consider. And I want them to know that I, and I'm sure as well as every other member of the city council, has weighed, and carefully weighed, each and every option that is available to us. Um, unfortunately, as you just discussed, we are quite limited, so I want them to understand that at all, as well, so, and that's all I have to add. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Cormier. Councilor Angelina, you all set?
Uh, very briefly, Mr. Chairman.
Sure, sure.
Thank you. Uh, first of all, let me say that, like many other councillors, I'm sure, I received several emails from constituents and people out of my ward who made passionate arguments and pleas, and 99% of them were extremely polite, and, uh, and a couple sort of suggested that if we didn't support the superintendent's original budget, it was because we didn't care about children. And, I mean, I'm gonna support this budget because I do care about children, and I think the superintendent and the other department heads in the city need a place to start in these uncertain times. I wholeheartedly support the proposition that was introduced tonight by the council president. You know, he has spoken with the superintendent, he is committed to finding a way to build on this initial budget. I have known the council president my entire life, his word is his bond, and he's extremely competent at getting things done. So, I, I don't support the 112 budget approach. Uh, I don't think it's fair to the department heads, quite frankly, and, um, I'm prepared to move ahead, and, and I know that this word and the will exists amongst the council, at least I feel that, that, uh, we will improve on this, it's a working document, and I will be voting in favor of it this evening. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilor Angelina. Uh, would any other, is there any other member of the council that has any final comments or thoughts before I close the public hearing on C-74?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I just have one last comment.
Yes, go ahead, Councilor Frida.
Um, I just want to clarify what my interpretation is. Uh, you mentioned that people are actually asking us to raise the, uh, increase the budget tonight. Uh, I didn't get that at all. I think they're asking us to shift some of the money from one account to another. I don't think most people that spoke tonight were asking us to raise taxes to cover the schools. So, I just wanted to, my interpretation of most of the comments were, take it out from one place and put it somewhere else, not necessarily increasing. We keep saying, increase the taxes to people, and that's not, that's not a fair assessment in my view. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Frida. Just to clarify what I said, we, we don't have the ability to add any more money from anywhere, okay? Anywhere. We can't move money from anywhere. We can't move money from any account without an appropriation from the mayor. So I believe...
I understand that.
If, if, if you interpreted something different that I said, I apologize, but that's the point I was trying to get across. Okay, is there any other comments or questions from the city council before I close the hearing on C-74?
Mr. Finance Chair?
Yes, Councilor Bonanza.
Um, I just also wanted to point out, um, expanding on what you and Councilor Frida both just mentioned, uh, if we happen to cut a line item, whatever it might be, which is in, in our authority, uh, we do not have the authority to shift or reallocate that money. Uh, that money would just go away from the budget, and it would be the mayor's sole province to send an appropriation back to us if he so chose to, uh, spend that money in some other fashion that we would have to approve. Uh, it is not an automatic, uh, and we have, we have no authority over that whatsoever.
Thank you. Is there any other comments or questions on C-74 before I close this public hearing from the city council? Okay, seeing none. I will close public hearing on C-74. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, we will now conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the discretion of the council president, clarification may be given. Um, obviously, tonight, we've had a number of speakers, um, already present with respect to C seventy-four, which is on our agenda, of course, this evening. Uh, I would just ask any future speakers under the public forum not to be repetitive or redundant with respect to matters already discussed in the, um, during the public hearing. Uh, but of course, I will afford, uh, an opportunity to anybody on this line, uh, anybody from the public who wishes to address us under the public forum. So with that, Madam Clerk, could you unmute and, uh, ask, uh, if there is anyone who would like to address us in the public forum?
The lines are muted, Mr. President.
Okay, is there any member of the public that would, wishes to address the city council in the public forum?
Uh, yes, uh, Peter Higginson.
Okay, I'm Mr. Higginson, I'll let the clerk mute the background and you can, uh, speak. Did you identify his line, uh, Madam Clerk?
I have, he should be good to go now.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Higginson, please continue.
Thank you, uh, Peter Higginson, three thirty-three Elm Street. Uh, I apologize for not speaking up, uh, at, uh, the public hearing that we just had, um, for C seventy, uh, C seventy-four. Um, but I did want to, uh, uh, just echo a couple of the last things, um, you know, regarding OPEB, uh, and the pension account. Uh, and I wanted to make, uh, one point clear that, uh, it had been alluded to a few times, but it is my understanding that because of the situation that we have, uh, before us with the pandemic, that if the city council does not approve the budget today, uh, we can have a month of, the, the mayor still needs to appropriate it, but the mayor could propose a month budget for next month, which would allow the City of Leominster to get more information from the state and possibly even the federal government in terms of what next year, next fiscal year will look like. And that, I think, would alleviate a lot of the problems that we're currently facing with the unknown. Um, so I believe that is an option that is for you, uh, it's a, it's an existing law and that was reaffirmed earlier this month and signed into law by the governor, um, and I would, uh, you know, ask that you seriously consider that as one of the options, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higginson, much appreciated. Um, uh, Madam Clerk, could you open the lines again, please?
Thanks, it's the office.
Okay, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public? Is there any member of the public that wishes to address the city council in the public forum? For a third and final time, is there any member of the public wishes to address the city council in the public forum? Hearing none, public forum is closed. We are back in session and I think we will move on to appointments, uh, with respect to, um, yes, with appointments. Uh, Madam Clerk, uh, could you continue?
Yes, Mr. President, can I just have one moment to finish reading the lines?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you. All right, appointments. A measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Rocco Palmieri to the Historical Commission term to expire four fifteen, twenty twenty-three.
The, uh, appointment of Rocco Palmieri is c- uh, is referred to the chairwoman of Ways and Needs.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, first time on the calendar, regular course, and we will not require an interview as this is a reappointment, thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Chairwoman. Now moving on to orders, starting with C seventy-six.
C seventy-six, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that the attached alone order be adopted regarding No Town and Fall Brook Water Treatment Plant upgrades.
C seventy-six is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, uh, regular course on C dash seventy-six, and I would like to, uh, take a vote to establish a public hearing on July thirteenth, twenty twenty, at six fifty P M.
You've heard the recommendation of the chairman of finance to establish a hearing on C seventy-six for July thirteenth, two thousand and twenty, at six fifty P M. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, is there any objection? Hearing no objection, the public hearing is established on July thirteenth, twenty twenty, at six fifteen P M. Uh, we'll now move on to C seventy-seven.
C seventy-seven, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of one thousand two hundred fifty dollars be made to the Conservation Commission expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the wetland fees reserved for appropriation account.
C seventy-seven is referred to the chairman of finance.
Thank you, Mr. President, C seventy-seven is first time on the calendar and it will be given regular course.
Very well, um, C seventy-seven is, um, uh, is given regular course. Moving on to C seventy-eight, we have an emergency preamble, um, which we need to vote on first. Uh, anything on the, uh, preamble, Mr. Chairman, for the record?
Anything in terms of any discussion?
I- is there any, uh, was there anything that came with it, the, any document that came with it?
Yes, well, yeah, there is an explanation for it, yes.
All right, well, why don't you read C seventy-eight first?
Okay, and, um, well, I can read it and then we can vote on the emergen- whether we're gonna accept it as an emergency and then I'll-
Correct.
And then we'll go from there, okay? C dash seventy-eight, emergency preamble, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request an appropriation of thirty-five thousand dollars be made to the police department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the police salary and wages account.
Okay, so this is gonna require an emergency preamble, right?
Yes, we do have to ex- we have to vote to accept this as an emergency prior to, uh, going any further, and if it's not accepted as an emergency, it will just get regular course.
All right, so I will entertain a vote by roll call, whether or not we're gonna accept this as an emergency preamble, and I'll start with councillor Frida.
Yay.
Councillor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councillor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councillor Feckley?
Yay.
Councillor Angelini?
Yay.
Councillor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
And councillor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to nothing. C seventy-eight is accepted as an emergency preamble. Um, does the chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, um, I do believe that, you know, this does affect certainly the peace, health, and safety of the community. Um, what the police chief is requesting here is additional money, um, and, um, in normal times, this would, he, he writes, in normal times, this likely would last the rest of the fiscal year, however, these are not normal times and I am concerned another crisis before July first could not be absorbed by this amount. The police salary and wages account will run surplus this fiscal year. Our request with emergency preamble that thirty-five dollars be, thirty-five thousand dollars be transferred from police salaries and wages to police, uh, overtime, um, you know, so obviously, this has been, um, as a result of, of COVID nineteen, uh, and other, uh, as well as demonstrations that have went on that, uh, required, uh, additional, uh, police presence. Um, I think we all know what has went on, uh, in, in recent weeks, and so, I, if you could, all members of my committee, Mr. President, but I certainly am in favor of this additional funding, uh, so that the account can, can get them through the next eight or so days till the end of the year.
Okay, I'll check with councillor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
And I'll check with councillor Angelini.
I am also in agreement.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C set, C seventy-eight, is there any further discussion?
I have a question, Mr. President.
Yes, councillor Frida?
Councillor Frida, uh, just wanted to see if this is gonna be reimbursable for COVID?
Well, um-
Through, through the chair, um, I have not gotten confirmation of this, um, but I, I do believe that it is all gonna be submitted for reimbursement, but I, I, I cannot one hundred percent confirm that, uh, but it is, it is, I think, very, very likely.
Anything further councillor Frida?
No, I'm good, thank you.
Is there any additional discussion by any councillor? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, councillor Frida?
Yay.
Councillor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councillor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councillor Feckley?
Yay.
Councillor Angelini?
Yay.
Councillor, uh, Pauline Corm- I'm sorry, councillor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councillor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, C seventy-eight has passed, uh, been granted by, rather, by a vote of nine to zero, does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, I will do my best, um, I don't have one, an actual one in front of me with all the wording, but I believe it would read, order that the sum of thirty-five thousand dollars be made to the police department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the police salary and wages account, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard, you've heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call as well, councillor Frida?
Yay.
Councillor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councillor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councillor Feckley?
Yay.
Councillor Angelini?
Yay.
Councillor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councillor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, the, uh, uh, the, uh, order is adopted. Moving on to C seventy-nine?
Okay, uh, Mr. President, uh, C dash seventy-nine will need to be handled by the clerk of finance that, um, that is directly affects the fire department salary and wages account, and I do have to abstain from that because I have a conflict of interest with a family member in the fire department.
Thank you very much councillor Cormier, if councillor Pauline Cormier would read C seventy-nine, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President, uh, emergency preamble, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of thirty thousand dollars be made to the fire department overtime account, same amount to be transferred from the fire department salary and wages account. A similar situation, uh, Mr. President, is we first need to vote, uh, whether to accept, uh, the emergency preamble.
Very well, um, I will start, uh, that roll call vote with councillor Frida?
Yay.
Councillor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councillor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councillor Feckley?
Yay.
Councillor Angelini?
Yay.
Councillor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero with one abstention, the emergency preamble, um, is accepted. Uh, councillor Pauline Cormier, do you have a report?
I do, Mr. President, this is, we are in receipt of a, a letter from the Leominster Fire Department, the chief, Robert Sidlo, to the mayor's office originally, and it is a request for a transfer from the fire department salary and wages account to the fire department public safety overtime account. Says, dear Mister, Mayor Mazzarella, the fire department requests the sum of thirty thousand dollars for overtime costs to be transferred from the salaries and wages. The need for overtime is related to normal contract obligations, COVID nineteen coverage, injured-on-duty coverage, and long-term sick leave coverage, and, uh, thank you for your support, and that was dated June seventeenth of twenty twenty. As we just had the meeting with Chief Sidlo, uh, he explained to us with the COVID nineteen, the additional projects that they needed to take on, uh, in order to provide safe facilities in addition, uh, additionally, additional living facilities, uh, to keep the firefighters separated. Um, I know councillor Frida had made, had questioned the earlier request, and I do believe Chief Sidlo informed us that he was working with the mayor's office to follow the guidelines to get the COVID nineteen, uh, reimbursements for any of these funds. Um, so based on that info- information, it would be my recommendation, uh, to support this request.
Okay, I'll check with the remaining member of your committee, councillor Angelini?
Yes, I support C seventy-nine as well.
Okay, uh, members of the council, you heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C dash seventy-nine, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, councillor Frida?
Yes, I just wanna make a point, um, I supported this as I did the other, because money's coming out of their own accounts without stabilization, so, yay, my-
Thank you councillor Frida. Councillor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councillor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councillor, uh, Feckley?
Yay.
Councillor Angelini?
Yay.
Councillor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero, uh, C seventy-nine is granted. Does the chairperson have an order?
I do, Mr. President, order that the sum of thirty thousand dollars, um, sorry-
Be appropriated to?
The appropriation of thirty thou- thirty thousand dollars be made from the fire department overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the fire department salary and wages account, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard for the requ- you heard, you've heard the motion to, for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, again by roll call, councillor Frida?
Yay.
Councillor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councillor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councillor Feckley?
Yay.
Councillor Angelini?
Yay.
Councillor Arndinger?
Yay.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with sixty-seven dash twenty, thank you, uh, finance committee.
Sixty-seven dash twenty, Verizon New England Inc., request permission to locate poles, wires, cables, and fixtures, including the necessary anchors, guys, and other such sust- sustaining and protecting fixtures to be owned and used in common by your petitioners along and across the following public ways or ways. Franklin Street, relocate one solely-owned pole number T point five dash one to a point on the northerly side of Franklin Street, approximately three hundred twenty feet easterly from the center line of Pleasant Street. Reason, relocate one solely-owned pole on Franklin Street at the que- request of an abouter, and to provide for the distribution of intelligence and telecommunications.
Sixty-seven dash twenty is referred to the chairwoman of public service.
Yes, Mr. President, uh, regular course, we have to vote, uh, to have a hearing on July thirteenth at six fifty-four P M.
Very well, you've heard the recommendation of the chairwoman of public service, uh, to, uh, give sixty-seven dash twenty regular course and establish a hearing on July thirteenth, twenty twenty, at six fifty-four P M. Uh, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there any objection to the hearing date? Hearing is established on July thirteenth, twenty twenty, on sixty-seven dash twenty, which is given regular course. Moving on to sixty-eight dash twenty, um-
Sixty-eighth, oops.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Okay, sixty-eight dash twenty, National Grid requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting, protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Vinton Street, National Grid to install one SO pole on Vinton Street, beginning at a point approximately twenty feet south slash southwest of the center line of the intersection of Mechanic Street, and continuing approximately two hundred and seventy feet in a south-southwest direction. Per request of customer at seventeen Vinton Street, National Grid will remove a tree guy and install a new stub pole with anchor. P two dash eighty-four will be set approximately forty-three feet south of pole two, and an anchor will be set approximately six feet from pole two dash eighty-four. anchor will be set approximately six feet from pole two dash eighty-four, located approximately as shown on page attached.
Sixty-eight dash twenty is referred to the Chairwoman of Public Service.
Yes, Mr. President, regular course, and we need to establish a hearing on, uh, July thirteenth at six fifty-three PM.
Very well, you've heard the recommendation of the Chairwoman of Public Service to establish a public hearing on sixty-eight dash twenty for July thirteenth, twenty twenty, at six fifty-three PM, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, is there any objection to the establishment of the hearing date for sixty-eight dash twenty? Very well, the hearing date is established for July thirteenth, twenty twenty, at six fifty-three PM. Gathers before the City Council, starting with the City of Leamester financial report.
Thank you, Mr. President, um, we started the fiscal year on July one, uh, twenty nineteen, with nineteen million eight hundred and ninety thousand seven hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-five cents, we have earned two hundred and forty-nine thousand four hundred and fifty-nine dollars and ninety-one cents in interest, including the item that's on the agenda for tonight, if- if approved, we will have spent five million nine hundred and fifty-eight thousand four hundred and thirty-six dollars and twelve cents, leaving us with a balance of fourteen million one hundred and eighty-one thousand eight hundred and four dollars and four cents, and that is the financial report, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, before we move on to the rest...
Mr. President, m-...
Yes, Councilor Frida?
Before we continue, did we vote on sixty-eight twenty?
Uh, we- yes, we did, well, I asked if there was any objection to, um, establishing the hearing date, and there was no objection, so I established it.
Oh, all right.
Okay, um...
I- yeah, I didn't think we voted, that's why, uh...
We- I- I asked for a- an objection, no one objected, and I considered that vote- voting, uh, a, uh, a vote in- in favor of establishing, uh, July thirteenth as the hearing date.
Okay.
Okay? All right.
Mm-hmm.
So, before we, uh, move on with the remainder of the finance calendar, does the Ways and Means Chairwoman, uh, want to move, uh, her agenda to the front, uh, do you wanna do them all, uh, Councilor Feckley?
Sure, that'd be fine.
Okay, very well, why don't we do that then?
All right, I will do the first two in block.
Very well.
There's no objection, first two.
Okay.
A measure confirmed, okay?
Yep, very well.
All right, a measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Nancy King to the Cultural Commission, term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, and a measure confirming the mayor's reappointment of Elizabeth Raymond to the Cultural Commission, for term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Um, Mr. President, I remember that these two, um, individuals came down before us for their appointment, um, they were delightful women who had a lot of, uh, interest in, um, the cultural activities in the City of Leamester, I have heard nothing but good things about them, and, uh, I feel as though we should confirm their reappointment to the Cultural Commission, I'll ask you to con- consult my committee.
Very well, Councilor Frida?
Uh, I agree.
And Councilor Dombrowski?
I agree.
You've heard the MS recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to confirm the reappointment of Nancy King to the Cultural Commission, confirm the reappointment of Elizabeth Raymond to the Cultural Commission, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor, um, Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Aringer?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, by a vote of nine to zero, the reappointments of Nancy King and Elizabeth Raymond to the Cultural Commission have been confirmed, moving on to the appointment of Susan Shelton?
Thank you, Mr. President, a measure confirming the mayor's appointment of Susan Shelton to the Library Board of Trustees, term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three. Uh, Ms. Shelton, um, came- appeared virtually before us this evening, she is, uh, was a longtime director of the Leamester Li- Public Library, uh, she continues to serve in other capacities in other municipalities, um, in library-related, um, commissions, and we are very, very fortunate that she has chosen to continue to assist, uh, the City of Leamester on the Board of Trustees to the Library, so my recommendation would be that we will confirm the mayor's re- appointment of Susan Shelton to the Library Board of Trustees, and I will ask you to poll my committee.
Very well, uh, Councilor Frida?
I absolutely agree.
And Councilor Dombrowski?
I agree as well.
Okay, you've heard the MS recommendation of the Ways and Means Committee to appoint Susan Shelton to the Library Board of Tre- Trustees, term to expire April fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Councilor Feckley?
Yay.
Councilor Angelini?
Yay.
Councilor Aringer?
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Councilor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, by a vote of nine to zero, the appointment of Susan Shelton to the Library Board of Trustees is confirmed, and if you're on the line, Susan, congratulations, well deserved. Okay, um, back to finance, and, uh, starting with C sixty-seven, does the chairman have a report?
Thank you, Mr. President, C dash sixty-seven, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of seventy-one thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars be made to the cemetery salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account, um, basically, uh, this is, you know, customary, it's the beginning of the fiscal year, and, um, they need to fund, um, the cemetery, it's regarding, um, cemetery labor for thirty-eight thousand four hundred and forty dollars, cemetery part-time for fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars, and cemetery clerical for seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-one, for a total of seventy-one thousand four hundred and ninety-two, um, you know, I- I personally have- have for years not voted for money coming out of cem- cemetery perpetual care, um, it's not that I disagree with what we're spending it on, it's- I- I just don't agree where it's coming out of, I- I've been saying for years, I think the money should- out of the city's budget, um, should be using perpetual care to, you know, take better care of the grounds, but that is just my personal opinion, and I'd ask you to poll my committee, Mr. President.
Okay, uh, Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, uh, through the chair, is- was Councilor Cormier in favor of or against?
I couldn't tell.
I first- I- I am not in favor of spending money out of perpetual care.
Council Cormier, your- Council Pauline Cormier, your position?
I'm gonna disagree with my- with my counterpart, I- I would support this.
Okay, and Councilor Angelini?
I will support the appropriation request.
Very well, you've heard the majority report of the Finance Committee to grant C dash sixty-seven, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Councilor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Feckley?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Aringer?
Nay.
Council, um, Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council David Cormier?
Nay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, by a vote of seven to two, C sixty-seven is granted, does the chairman have a report? I'm sorry, does the chairman have a- does the chairman have an order?
Mr. President, order that the sum of seventy-one thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars be appropriated to the cemetery salary and wages account, the same amount to be transferred from the cemetery perpetual care income account, this is regarding cemetery labor, thirty-eight thousand four hundred and forty-six dollars, cemetery part-time, fifteen thousand five hundred and eighty-five dollars, and cemetery clerical, seventeen thousand four hundred and sixty-one dollars, for a total of seventy-one thousand four hundred and ninety-two dollars, move for the adoption of the order, Mr. President.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Councilor Frida?
Yay.
Council Dombrowski?
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Feckley?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Aringer?
Nay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council David Cormier?
Nay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, by a vote of seven to two, the order is adopted, moving on to C sixty-eight, does the chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash sixty-eight, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of forty-five thousand dollars be made to the library expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the library state aid account, uh, we do have a letter here, um, from Sandra Murphy, dated May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty, uh, this is to the mayor, she's re- forty-five thousand dollars be transferred from the library's direct state aid account to the library's municipal book line item. The Leamester Public Library must expend a minimum of thirteen percent of its total budget annually on library materials, this percentage is based on the population served. This requirement, among others, must be met each fiscal year to qualify for state aid in the, uh, state aid the following fiscal year. This fiscal year, the Board of Trustees voted to expend two hundred and two thousand eight hundred and fifty dollars for library materials to meet the public's demand for print, non-print, and electronic resources. This goal will be achieved by adding state aid and gifts and donations and friends money to the twen- uh, to the FY twenty municipal appropriation for library materials. The library receives its state aid annually without appropriation, this means that it comes directly to the library and does not require by state statute a vote of the council, however, it has always been the practice of the library, as a courtesy to the City Council, to request transfer from the state aid account to the library's operating budget. Philosophically, it is believed that this is an important part of keeping the City Council informed as to the overall finances of the library, if you have any questions regarding this request, please do not hesitate to contact me, Sandra Murphy, so I think it's pretty self-explanatory, um, we make this appropriation so that we can ensure, um, our- our state aid, so I am in favor of, uh, of C dash sixty-eight, and I'll ask you to poll my committee.
Very well, uh, Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Council Angelini?
I'll make it, uh, unanimous.
Very well, you've heard the MS recommendation of Finance to grant C dash sixty-eight, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Council Frida?
Yay.
Council Dombrowski?
Yay.
Council An- uh, I'm sorry, Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Feckley?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Aringer?
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, by a vote of nine to zero, C sixty-eight is granted, does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of forty-five thousand dollars be appropriated to library expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the library state aid account, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Council Frida?
Yay.
Council Dombrowski?
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Feckley?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Aringer?
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, the order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero, moving on to C seventy?
Um...
Does the chairman have a report?
What about C dash sixty-nine, Mr. President?
I- I apparently am getting ahead of myself in anticipation of turning the page, I'm very sorry, uh, C sixty-nine, does the chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash sixty-nine, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, relative to the appropriation of seventy-three thousand eighty dollars be made to the cemetery capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the cemetery sale of lot fund, this is regarding one hundred and forty-four units, um, which are seventy-three thousand and eighty dollars, uh, the units, what they're referring to are the- the niches in the columbarium, there are one- there are gonna be one hundred and forty-four total niches, uh, in- being installed with this project, which can, I was told, hold up to two sets of cremains per niche, so there could be up to two hundred and eighty-eight individuals, uh, urns entombed in those niches, um, and basically what they are asking for here is, um, uh, we have a letter from Ray Racine dated May one, twenty twenty, "We have begun the process of installing these units, we are ready to move forward to finishing things up, they are becoming very popular, we now look to purchase and install another one hundred and forty-four units, and will be funding- and will need funding to complete. An additional seventy-three thousand eighty dollars will be necessary to purchase and install the remaining units," um, and that is from Ray Racine, so if anybody has not been down to the cemetery there recently, um, they are installing columbariums, they've talked about this, uh, in the past, I think it was about a year ago, and it's finally coming to fruition, and they need to make the transfer so they- they can spend the funds to purchase additional, uh, material that they need, uh, so I am certainly in favor of this, uh, at the end of the day, uh, the- after they make the sales of those, uh, niches, that there is profit to be made, uh, for the cemetery department, so I certainly am in favor of- of C dash sixty-nine, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Very well, uh, Council Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Council Angelini?
And once again, I will make it unanimous.
Well, you've heard the MS recommendation of Finance to grant C dash sixty-nine, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Council Frida?
Yay.
Council Dombrowski? Council Dombrowski?
I'm sorry, I muted myself by mistake, yay.
Oh, no worries, uh, that's okay, Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council Feckley?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Aringer?
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, by a vote of nine to zero, C sixty-nine is granted, does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of seventy-three thousand eighty dollars be appropriated to the cemetery capital outlay expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the cemetery sale of lot fund, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call, Council Frida?
Yay.
Council Dombrowski?
Yay.
Council Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Council, um, Feckley?
Yay.
Council Angelini?
Yay.
Council Aringer?
Yay.
Council Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Council David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, by a vote of nine to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C seventy this time, um, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash seventy- Yes, Mr. President, C dash seventy, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of four-hundred thousand dollars be made to the pension expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund. Um, we have done this for the past couple or a few months now. Uh, this is basically, um, because of the downturn in the markets with COVID-nineteen, uh, the, uh, administration has felt that it would be prudent to take these funds out of these accounts and prepay them. You'll see that there is a line item in the budget that plans to pay back, uh, all of the money, um, that we appropriated to, to, to do this. Um, and what the way of thinking is, is we were not selling off, uh, investments in the pension fund at a lower price when the market, uh, went sour. Therefore, leaving the money alone and allowing it to rebound, that it was estimated by the city comptroller, uh, that, um, there would be potential savings to the city. I believe it was definitely over a hundred thousand dollars. Um, and we did this in, uh, prior months, and they're asking for this to be done again. A portion of this month's pension payments to be done again this way. Um, and certainly, the market has, you know, has, is rebounding and, and, um, I think at the height of it, when we were not taking money out, we certainly, uh, saved a lot or, or made a lot of money in an indirect way by, um, by leaving the funds sit there. Uh, so it certainly would be my recommendation to grant C dash seventy, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Very well, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini?
I will vote in affirmative.
Very well, you've heard the MS recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash seventy, is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chair- Mr. President, uh, Counselor Frida?
Yes, Counselor Frida.
Um, I'm not gonna be supporting this because it's coming out of stabilization. We should have free cash by this time, and that's where it should be coming out of. So I'm not gonna support this for that reason.
Thank you very much, Counselor Frida, is there any other Counselor that wishes to be heard? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Nay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Nay.
Uh, Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, uh, C seventy has been granted by a vote of six to three, I believe? Am I that correct, Madam Clerk?
Yes, that's correct.
Um, Mr. Chairman, do you have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of four-hundred thousand dollars be appropriated to the pension expense account. Excuse me, Mr. President, um, the same amount to be transferred from the stabilization fund, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor, that was nay Counselor, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor, um, Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor, um, Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of six to three, the order is adopted. Moving on to C seventy-one, does the Chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash seventy-one, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, requested the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one water department budget, which totals five million eight-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars, be adopted as listed, the same amount to be authorized by Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E. This is, um, regarding the attachment, there is an attachment of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one water department budget. We did have a public hearing, uh, on this tonight, Mr. President, uh, as required, and, uh, it would be my recommendation that we grant C dash seventy-one.
You've heard the, oh, I gotta poll your committee, uh, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I will make it unanimous.
The, you've heard the MS recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash seventy-one, is there any further discussion?
Uh, Mr. President, I am going to recuse myself from both C seventy-one and C seventy-two. This is Counselor Shalfo Zephyr, uh, due to a conflict of interest.
Thank you very much, Counselor Shalfo Zephyr. Um, is there any further discussion by any other Counselor? Okay, hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor, um, Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Nay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero with Counselor Shalfo Zephyr abstaining. C seventy-one is granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, um, hold on. I guess I didn't get this, this one, but I think I can, um, so it would be, um, order that the sum of five million eight-hundred-and-seventy-six thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars be appropriated, um, it, uh, as listed, the same amount to be raised as authorized by Mass. General Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E, move for the adoption of the order.
Heard the adoption, the move, the motion for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Counsel, and I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero, the order is adopted, moving on to C seventy-two. Does the Chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, uh, C dash seventy-two, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, requests that the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one store department budget, which totals five million five-hundred-and-eleven thousand five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars be adopted as listed, the same amount to be raised as, as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E. As required, we did have a public hearing this evening, and it would be my recommendation to grant C dash seventy-two, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Yeah, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Angelini?
I will agree.
All right, you've heard the MS recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash seventy-two, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero, C dash seventy-two is granted, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, um, ordered that the sum of five million five-hundred-and-eleven thousand five-hundred-and-forty-nine dollars, um, be adopted, uh, to the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one store department budget, uh, the same amount to be raised as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, chapter forty-four, section fifty-three E, move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C seventy-three, does the Chairman have an order? I'm sorry, does the Chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash seventy-three, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, relative to the appropriation of one-hundred thousand dollars be made to the Gallagher Building Salary and Wages Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Fund. Uh, this is customary, we do this every year, um, from and to this account. Um, it's, you know, basically, this is gonna be the FY twenty-twenty-one operating expenses that we are allocating to them. Uh, we do, we do rent that building out to the courthouse, and we are, um, you know, responsible for the maintenance on it, uh, and anything that, you know, could, could go wrong, that would need to be done, or anything that needs to be up kept. So, um, like I said, this is customary, and I, I have no issue with it, and it would be my recommendation that we grant C dash seventy-three, and I'll ask you to poll members of my committee.
Very well, uh, Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Angelini?
I am also in agreement.
Um, you've heard the MS recommendation of finance to grant C dash seventy-three, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, this will be by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Counselor, um, Dombrowski?
I agree.
Counselor, uh, Shalfo Zephyr?
Ye- uh, yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Um, Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor, uh, Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay. C seventy-three is granted by a vote of nine to zero, does the Chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President, order that the sum of one-hundred thousand dollars be appropriated to the Gallagher Building Salary and Wages Account, the same amount to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Revolving Account. This is regarding the FY twenty-twenty-one operating expenses, and move for the adoption of the order.
Heard the request for the adoption of the order, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, by roll call, Counselor Frida?
Nay.
Counselor Dombrowski?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Feckley?
Yay.
Counselor Angelini?
Yay.
Counselor Arndinger?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C seventy-four, does the Chairman have a report?
Yes, Mr. President, C dash seventy-four, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor, requests that the fiscal year twenty-twenty-one budget, which totals one-hundred-and-thirty-three million, four-hundred-and-fifty-seven thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-two dollars be adopted, the same amount to be raised by fiscal year twenty-twenty-one revenues. Um, once again, Mr. President, we did have a pretty lengthy, um, uh, budget hearing tonight, uh, as required by charter, and I just, before I begin, I am the, you know, the Chair of Finance, and I just have a couple of things that I need to discuss, um, regarding my vote on the budget with my conflict. Um, I just wanna make it clear that we had a budget hearing, um, last Monday night, I believe, on the fire department budget, and I did abstain from all of the discussion regarding salary and wages. And, um, I w- will be voting on the budget tonight as a whole. And I also want to disclose that I am also on the Disability Commission, and I am the Chairman of, uh, the, um, I'm the sort of the Finance Chair, I'm the Treasurer of the Disability Commission, so I do need to disclose that as well, um, that I do have a conflict there, but I, once again, am voting on the budget, uh, as a whole. Um, so, you know, this, this two will vote this evening, uh, Mr. President, on, on an issue that, that is, you know, it's, it's very near and dear to people. Um, you know, it's been a very, very tough year, there were a lot of unforeseen things that have happened, uh, in our world and in our economy, and unfortunately, the City of Leominster, you know, was, was no exception. Um, you know, the, the COVID-nineteen, the coronavirus, it really did not discriminate against anybody. It was a worldwide, um, problem that has reached, um, every corner of the globe, and we are no exception. Um, so with that being said, um, obviously, state revenues are down. Um, you know, the latest numbers are six to eight mil- uh, six to eight billion dollars right now, which has left, uh, you know, the legislature and, and the governor scrambling, trying to figure out, you know, what they're gonna do, uh, what, what is gonna be a priority for spending, uh, in the next fiscal year. Um, you know, where are the cuts gonna have to be made? What are, what are the revenues really gonna be, uh, going forward? You know, it is a lot of, there's a lot of uncertainty. Um, and I, and I will just say that, you know, as the Chairman of Finance, like, you know, even, it, even just as a, as an elected official, you know, um, in and of itself, I think it's important that you have to understand what your role is in government, and, and we all have a role. We do all have a role in government, and, you know, our, sometimes our roles are, are more limited than, than other people's roles in government. Um, so with that being said, you know, as the Chair of Finance, I, I hear everybody's concern. We, it's very likely there's gonna be cuts, and, you know, it could be, it's probably gonna be chapter seventy, could be local aid, there could be, there could be other cuts. Anything that, you know, gets any funding from the state, you know, is in jeopardy until we have some kind of a budget from the state. Um, and unfortunately, we doesn't, we, we don't know when that is gonna be. But I think it's important, um, to put some kind of budget in place so that we can continue to operate, you know, on July first. I understand the concerns of the people in, in the school department, and, and like the Ward Five Counselor, you know, spoke about my comments during the budget hearing last Wednesday night. Uh, you know, the people that have gotten pink slips, and all the people that, you know, will be, will be left there to teach, if there are any layoffs, all the people that are gonna be left there to teach have to pick up the burden. And it's gonna be a tough burden to pick up because kids are gonna be learning differently, because they've missed a lot of school, they, they're gonna be behind. Um, there's gonna be a lot of fear, um, with going back into the buildings for the, for the kids that do. Some kids are gonna have to distant learn, which might be a challenge for them in and of itself. And, and like the Ward Counsel- the Ward Five Counselor pointed out, you know, my comments last Wednesday night, you know, the teachers that were pink slipped, a- and all of the teachers, that they're our friends and our neighbors. And, and, and the fact of the matter is, they just wanna go to school every day and, and teach our kids. They, they wanna teach the kids of this city that need a good education, uh, there is no question about it. And to say that we don't care about education because we vote for the budget or anything like that, i- is just, it's just totally not true. And it, and it honestly, uh, it, you know, it makes me sick to my stomach to think that, that there are some people that, that say that or actually think that. I don't think that any elected official in any community wants to see this kind of thing happen. If you do, then you don't belong in any level of government, in my opinion, okay? I don't think anybody in their right mind, who is in elected office, would wanna see funding get cut and, and damage be done to any department in this city. We all want- We all want the best for our community. And it's a situation now where, you know, we are all gonna have to work together. We can't, nobody can take an adversarial position to this whole thing. And if we don't put a budget in place, we have a lot going on with public safety right now with COVID nineteen. We've had a lot of protests and demonstrations going on, uh, you know, in our community and beyond. And we don't know from day to day to day of what is gonna happen in our community next. And we have to have funding in place. We have a recreation department that is gonna spend money like crazy on July one for summer programs for these kids that wanna go there that haven't had a place to go since March, okay? They need a place to go for the summer so they can be social and learn skills. Uh, we have a DPW that needs funds because it's summertime and they have a lot of projects that they have to do before the winter comes, which comes very fast. There are a lot of underground, under-road projects that they have to do, that they need funding for and cannot do it with a one-twelve budget. And quite frankly, I, I, I understand where people are coming from, that we can, you know, we can try to protest, we can, we can send a message. But unfortunately, what's gonna happen if we approve a one-twelve budget is we are gonna, we are gonna hurt a lot of other departments in the city, possibly even the school department, which probably needs to start expending money very quickly, uh, on July first. Um, and, and I just don't see what the gain is. Even if the state comes back with a cut i- in July, if you understand going back to what our role is in government, okay? There is nothing that the city council is going to be able to react to unless the mayor sends us some kind of an appropriation for more money or unless the state, uh, later in the year gives some kind of a supplemental budget. But unfortunately, our hands are tied. And I, I just think that if we don't act and put some kind of a budget in place tonight, we're not doing anybody any good. Um, I, what's before me right now is a, is a budget that the, the local contribution to our schools is over a million dollars more than it was last year. Um, we have, we have factored in a certain level of funding in Chapter seventy that is level to last year. And I think it sends a message to, to, to everybody involved that this is the funding we need to can, at least continue close to a level of service as the, as the previous fiscal year, or the mayor is gonna have to make, he's gonna have to make decisions. I mean, it's just, unfortunately, as I, as I explained, uh, Chapter forty-four, Section thirty-two and Article six of our charter, we have a mayor that is, you know, likes to spend money like it's going out of style. The city council can, can, can rein the mayor in and cut the budget, but we can't add to it. And I, I'm in a position right now where I just feel, I, I have, after hearing all of the concerns from everybody and understanding what my role is as a city counselor and what I am allowed to do under, under our local charter and under state law, I just feel that we have to pass the budget that is before us and then continue to work with the administration and continue to cheer on our state delegation, our state representative, our state senator, and, and, and even lobby the governor that we need the same level of funding from the state as last year. You know, they need to figure out, you know, what their priorities are a- a- as well. And if their priorities are, are not what they were last year, if they can't provide that level of funding, then the mayor will have to review his budget, his numbers, and he's gonna have to let us know what his, you know, priority is and send us supplemental budgets or, um, you know, notify department heads where they need, you know, where they need to cut. Um, so at this point, I, I am gonna recommend that we pass, um, C dash seventy-four. And I'll ask you, um, to poll the other members of my committee, Mr. President.
Very well, uh, uh, Counselor Cormier. I will now check with your clerk, Counselor Pauline Cormier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, and I'm gonna ask for a, a few minutes of indulgence from, from the council. I have, um, I've been accused of not speaking up enough, uh, and asking enough questions during the budget hearings. And I have to say that I, I found that I come to make my decisions by listening. And I listened in during the budget hearings fr- from all the departments and the department heads who are, they're, they're the experts in their fields. And I believe that they need every penny that they ask for. Um, and I've heard what they've said and I've read their budgets and I've read through the city's budget and, and I understand that, that cuts hurt everywhere. Um, I've also listened to all the, the phone calls I've gotten and I've tried to return every single phone call. I've read all the emails, both in favor of and, and against the budget. Um, and a- after reading it all, my, my biggest question came down to is the alternatives. What were our, as a council, our alternatives? And when I listen to the suggestions for them and whether it be just postponing a vote until the end of the mu- the end of July or a one-twelve budget, when you weigh the pros and cons, it just doesn't, the pros just don't add up. Uh, I, I think the city i- is, is left in a more difficult position across the board if we, if we go to, if we delay this or, or if we go to a one-twelve budget. And I have to say that, that any appropriation to the schools or any departments that have come before us in prior years, as a council, we have considered them and, and I don't know what the statistics are, but I'm gonna say ninety-nine percent of the time, we agree to them. We, we, we want these departments to have the money that they need. Uh, and I honestly believe that, that once we have the state numbers, that our mayor, our comptroller will, will bridge that gap. I, I, I fully believe that they will step up and they will help all the departments. And, and, you know, for the most part, the school department to, to bridge that gap, to get them what they need. So I, I'm going to look at this budget optimistically with the thoughts that we're going to do the right things as a council, as a city, and, and I'm going to vote in support of this budget.
Very well. Thank you, Counselor Pauline Cormier. And I'll move on to the third member of finance, Counselor Angelini.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me begin by, um, first recognizing those who advocated, uh, strongly, uh, the past couple of weeks for the school budget. Certainly, the State Committee and members of the school department, superintendent, they're wonderful advocates for the school system and they do a magnificent job for us. And I, I, I understand their position. We, as a council, obviously, have each and every department and we're stewards for those and, and we have to make decisions that are in the best interest of all the departments and all the citizenry. Uh, you know, everyone seems to recognize the dire situation we find ourselves in with the COVID nineteen situation. But just this, 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 earlier this week, forty-seven million Americans applied for unemployment insurance. Now, I don't break it down by city and town, but certainly many residents of Lemonster were among those unemployment applicants. Um, the federal government, the Treasury Department, Central Bank, the Federal Reserve Bank have introduced historic liquidity to tr- to, to prevent an economic disaster. So I would hope that there'll be more federal aid coming to states that will in turn be handed out to cities and towns. When that will happen, I don't know. But certainly, I believe that department heads need a budget so that they can begin moving ahead. And as the situation develops with state aid, um, a- a- and we, we get a better handle on revenues, I'll certainly support, um, a, 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 an appropriation request from the mayor for additional funding to different departments, including obviously the schools. But right now, this situation that we're in, um, I don't think a one-twelve budget is the way to go. I, I do understand the position of those in the school committee who advocate for that. But we've heard the comptroller, um, state unequivocally that that will cost us money. And every dollar, um, of incurred cost is a dollar that we can't spend in other departments. So for those reasons and many more that I could go on for an hour, but I won't, um, I will be supporting this budget as well, not because I think it's a wonderful budget, but because it's the budget that's before us and it's a, it's a starting place in a situation that's fluid and hopefully improved dramatically from here. And let me just say in closing, all the discussion about our excess reserves and, and I just, you know, next year, we've heard dire predictions as well. And if we were to deplete those emergency reserves, some would accuse us of being negligent with the city's finances if we're in a worse position next year. So I think moving slowly and cautiously here is wise and prudent and that's how, how, why I'll support this budget this evening. Thank you, uh, Mr. President and Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Counselor Angelini. You have heard the MS recommendation of the Finance Committee to grant C dash seventy-four. Is there any further discussion?
Uh, Counselor Arndinger? May I speak?
Yes, Counselor, you can go ahead and proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, as I see this, we are really faced with, uh, two choices tonight. Neither of these choices are good choices. We either, you know, accept this budget realizing that it's, uh, underfunding the schools or potentially underfunding the schools, re- gonna require layoffs, not a good situation. We also have the option of, of, of voting a temporary budget till July thirty-first. But there's no guarantee that by July thirty-first, we'll have any resolution from the state. The fact is, I read a, uh, article today that said it would be probably at least August thirty-first before we had a resolution for the state. So that's not a good option. But given the choice of the two, you know, I think that, you know, we have to vote for this budget tonight and that would be the, uh, physically prudent thing to do. The other thing I wanna comment on is that, uh, when people accuse the school, uh, the city council for not caring about the kids, I really find that disingenuous. I know I have two grandchildren in the school de- uh, school system and I want their education to be top-notch. And I don't think anybody else on the council, uh, is anti-student or anti-school department. We, we just all are put in a tough position and we have to make the best choice that we can for the taxpayers of the, the city of Lemonster. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counselor Arndinger. Is any other counsel that wishes to be heard?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Uh, John Dombrowski?
Thank you, Counselor Dombrowski. You may proceed.
I've, I've been sitting in this chair a long time. Um, I think, I think Counselor Frida might be the only one who has me beat. Um, in the prior years, I've, I've consistently voted against the budget, um, largely because I believe the city was underfunding the schools and that we were barely meeting the antiquated, you know, spending requirement. It's been said many times, government is about priorities. I don't believe historically this administration's priority has been education. Um, simply put, if it were up to me, I would spend more on the schools. I would take from other areas, including the stabilization account, for the benefit of the schools. I, I, I personally would do that. Um, but what's, what's before us, um, is a, a unique year. And what's before us is not our individual choices. There's a stark realization we need to fully understand. Except in very limited circumstances, and, and those circumstances are not before us, um, the city council does not have the authority to appropriate monies. We don't have the authority to cut from one area and put that in place somewhere else. We can either cut specific areas and approve the budget or approve the budget as is, deny the budget. In past years, I, I, I've had the luxury of, of taking it through us off a hand to vote against the budget. Um, but this year is different. There are an abundant number of unknowns. And these unknowns affect the schools far more than any other. And given these unknowns, at, at last week's budget hearing, I, I asked for the pros and cons of denying the budget would put us on a month-to-month budget so that maybe we could find out about some of these unknowns. And we were given numerous reasons to approve the budget and not one, not one reason to oppose the budget and go to a monthly budget. A- and I'm sure some people might, might be thinking, you know, it defies logic to vote on a budget with some unknowns rather than waiting for knowns to be made by the state administration. But we all know that schools are different. Schools do more planning, all of their planning during the summer. The schools have far more requirements from the state and federal government than other city departments. The schools have far more employees than other city departments. The schools are dealing with far more children and special needs children than other city departments. To not have some level of certainty in these times, I believe, will hamstring the schools. It certainly will hamstring the other city departments. But despite the protests from m- many of the people who, who called in, I believe it will severely hamper the schools. Um, I'm reminded of two thousand seventeen when we had a crisis with the schools. Um, during that time, the city administration, with the help of the council and the help of the school committee, um, stepped up and earned a, a le- a level of trust. Uh, I'm confident the administration will step up again. And I, as I'm sure all of you, will be fully in support of the schools getting the money they need. I'm, I'm also comforted to some extent by the comptroller's words earlier tonight that any changes to this budget as a result of the state's actions, good and bad, would have to come back before the council. In summary, I, I, I just believe that now is not the time to go on a limited monthly budget. The school needs, the schools need as much flexibility as is possible. Um, y- you're talking going to the end of July Um, y- you're talking going to the end of July and schools starting arguably in some fashion three weeks later. I, I don't see that happening, um, without, without a budget in place. I don't see them being able to do what they need to do without a budget in place now. Um, having, having said that, I will be, as I voted against an appropriation today, I will be carefully scrutinizing all the appropriations, particularly those involving the stabilization account. Um, but, but I'm confident that we can work together like we did in two thousand seventeen and there were, there were members on this council that played a significant role in that. Um, and that together, we're going to get through this, but we need to work together, all three levels of government, together with the school committee. So, I will support the budget this evening.
Thank you, Councilor Dombrowski. Is there any other member of the council that wishes to be heard before we vote?
Mr. President?
Uh, Council Feckley. Council Feckley.
Okay, Council Feckley, uh, you may proceed.
Yeah. Thank you. Uh, so as I had stated during the public hearing or before the, after, you know, right before the public hearing, um, I, I did, I, I had listened to many, many people. Uh, many of my constituents have reached out to me, pro and con. I listened to everything that was said at all of our meetings, all of our hearings and I understand the frustration of many parents who have, um, had these children, their children home, from school, many of them, you know, being homeschooled by their parents, um, many special needs students that are without their particular paraprofessionals. And I feel for them, I do. I support the schools and I would like to have seen more money given to the schools this year. However, we keep on hearing this word everywhere we, we look, uncertainty. There's a lot of uncertainty going around to the point where I don't want to hear that word anymore, but we can't help it. Everywhere we turn, there's uncertainty. As Council Arndt indicated, we don't know if we're going to hear anything until the end of August, maybe never e- not even then regarding, um, additional aid. And the schools are going to open one way or the other, whether, whether they open virtually or whether they open face-to-face and they're going to need money to operate. They're going to need money to pay teachers. They're going to need money to pay paraprofessionals. They're going to need money for whatever kind of transportation, um, comes out of this dystopian, uh, uh, situation that we're in. The RCT Center is going to need money to open up their summer programs as Council David Cormier indicated. These students have been out of school since March. Many of them haven't even had an opportunity to play with their friends at all. They need the social interaction. It's healthy for kids to have social interaction. The schools are going to need to purchase PPE and cleaning supplies, even if that money is reimbursed by the Fed. They're going to need to start ordering them soon because they are in very, very short supply and promises are not kept about delivery of PPE. Again, uncertainty. Everything is uncertain. I am a big proponent of the fire and police and certainly the fire and police are going to need their money July first to keep the city safe. You can't even educate students unless your city is safe. And during, again, this time of uncertainty, when we never know what's going to pop up, are we going to have more protest? Is there going to be something else that happens? Were we going to need more fire and police protection? We don't know. So, they're going to need their money. So, this is not a time to send a message to anybody that we don't like the fact you didn't give us enough money. I want to be able to say that I am going to trust the mayor and the comptroller to do the right thing, once we find out what's going to be needed, to fund the schools so that they can operate to the best of their absolute ability when they open in the fall. So, although I've been on the fence and I have thought of a lot of different ways we could handle this, I have decided that I am going to support this budget this evening so that the city can keep moving and maybe we can do away with a little bit of the uncertainty. One thing will be certain, there'll be money in the coffers on July first. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Feckley. I know Councilor Shalifozefar, I think, was right behind you. Did you have the floor, Councilor Shalifozefar?
Thank you very much. Um, you know, this, I have followed as have every other counselor, all of the conversations, have heard from multiple people who work in the school department, parents of school children, school committee people and, you know, I, I, I go back to the fundamental question that always comes to my mind is, when is the city going to make schools and education a priority? When are we really going to step up and say schools are a very important priority? And everybody, I can see the mayor is just about to explode because, and he'll talk about all the money that has been spent on schools. And I agree with that. We have spent a lot of money on schools. It costs a lot of money to educate the students in our city. As far as, just, you know, unfortunately, we began the process with business as usual. The school department, after a lot of very hard work by administration, by the superintendent, the business office, the school committee passed a budget. The mayor provided a budget to the city council in his budget book that was significantly lower. Now, that is consistent with the last, I don't know, ten years, pick a number, five years. Add on top of that already significantly lower budget, all of the uncertainties about Chapter Seventy funds. So, we're in a, we're, we're in a situation that, to me, says, or indicates, you know, now is the time to just slow down and take a look at things. By delaying voting on a preliminary budget with fake numbers, because the Chapter Seventy money is not a real, um, number, as everybody knows, why not wait? And perhaps we will not only have state aid and Chapter Seventy actual numbers by the end of July, we also may have a reopening plan that the Commissioner of Education has been on. We talk about making sure the schools have enough money to open and to do their business and to do their ordering and I completely understand that and agree to that. It's not like if we delay, city departments like the police, like the fire, like the recreation department, like the mayor's office and like the school department, they're going to have money to operate in July. We might, we might be able to make a decision based on quality information. The school department, they can't spend money and plan because they don't know what reopening the school department in the fall is going to look like. They are waiting for the Commissioner of Education to come out with specific guidelines that each and every town and municipality in the Commonwealth is going to have to follow. So, you know, pushing it off a little bit, we would have the opportunity, we would give ourselves the chance to actually have quality information, more information, better information in hand than just going, um, going with a budget that is, is, is based on fiction. Really, it's based on fiction. So, I am just, you know, I, I understand what my role is as a city counselor. My role is to represent the taxpayers, the parents, the schoolchildren, everybody in the city and to advocate for things that I think are important. Um, I just, um, I don't, uh, we don't know what we're funding. The schools are going to have to open. They don't know what they're going to be spending money on. So, to pass a budget without real information, to me, it's just crazy. It's like an exercise in fu- it's like, why would anybody do that? You know, my objective honestly is, I've listened to everybody. I have been on the fence about the budget. I've gone back and forth about it. I have spoken to the mayor to get specific information from him. So, but I, I could understand his rationale for putting forward the budget that he did. I've talked to the superintendent. I've talked to school committee people. I've talked to parents, like most of you on the city council. I'm just thinking, you know, how can we solve this problem? You know, starting from a place where you're always starting, you know, ten miles behind or six million dollars behind or four million dollars behind. I mean, that's just, it just, it, it does not say to me that, you know what, that, that this year we've put the schools, w- we've, we've actually acknowledged the schools are a priority. So, I really, I am proposing, I'm not going to support this budget. And I propose that we delay voting on a budget until we have specific and concrete information from the state. I think it's irresponsible to pass a budget, A, when we don't know what the state aid number is going to be and B, when we don't even know what we are trying to fund. We don't have a plan that we know that this is the plan that we're trying to fund to open those schools in the fall and to pay those teachers and whatever the mix of, you know, is it all remote learning? We don't know. If it is, if the Commissioner of Education comes out with a remote learning plan that says, okay, in September, every district, we, you can't go back to the buildings because we can't figure out how to get enough kids inside the space safely. Well, that's great because, you know, we'll probably save money, save money on transportation. But we don't know that yet because we don't know what the, the, um, commissioner is going to say. So, um, you know, with that said, that, that's, that's what I think. I don't think this budget serves our students. I don't think it serves the community and it doesn't serve the taxpayer. Because taxpayers, you know, quality education and equity, I, I, somebody had talked earlier about, um, the trauma and the poverty and the need that the students in our community have experienced because of this COVID nineteen epidemic. And also, all of our students, I was told that all of our students next year are going to qualify for free and reduced lunch. So, we have a population that is going to need a lot of care and I don't see how this budget will provide the care and the educational tools. When you hear the head of the Lemmister Teachers Association talking about not having enough textbooks and, oh, by the way, they're fifteen or twenty years old. I mean, that to me is not providing the quality equitable education for the kids in Lemmister. So, I am not going to support this budget because you know what? I know, I know that the city can do better and I know that we can be better advocates and we can do better. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Shalifozefar. Councilor Freedom, um, if you want the floor, the floor is yours.
All right. Thank you. Um, I spoke earlier and my, my feelings have not changed. I'm very surprised with some of the stuff I've heard tonight, um, you know, what our role is in government. I mean, really? I've been around thirty-two years. I know what my role is. Um, both local aid and Chapter Seventy are going to be cut. I don't even think there's a question about maybe we'll have more to, to spend, maybe we'll have less that has to be cut. It is going to be cut. The biggest question is, how much is it going to be cut? Uh, I'm, seventeen people spoke tonight. Seventeen people spoke. You know, they had, some had a lot of really good points, some had points that I don't think everybody has thought of before. Um, I'm surprised that the Finance Committee would not want to sit back, take a couple day, couple weeks and have a meeting. Uh, it, they haven't talked amongst themselves. They have a meeting, oh, look at the, look at the budget. I mean, there's, there's debt service in there, nine hundred thousand dollars for a track. Do we need the track up there if we can't put kids in a school and educate them? We've had this amount in there in debt service for a track for, for a couple of years now. This isn't the year that we're going to build the track, not the year to have that nine hundred thousand in there. Four million, four million dollars is in there for OPEB and it, we can talk to, we're blowing their face about the differences in investments, saving money, um, how we do things. Uh, not every community out there that doesn't put, um, that amount of OPEB, uh, money and retirement money in their coffers every year are on the verge of bankruptcy. And there's a lot of very successful, um, communities out there. Um, I, to me, the, the Finance Committee should be looking at some of, going through some of the line items on their own, three people that are, serve on that committee. Seventeen people spoke, seventeen points of view. Uh, look at some of the other things in the budget that might be able to be cut. There, I, I do believe that, um, and the council are large, two seats down from me normally, brought up earlier, the unfunded liability. I think we both kind of agree in different ways that there is five point nine million dollars in there for, for unfunded liability for prior years. If, if that's the case, if there is five nine, point nine there, nine hundred thousand dollars on the track, I, I object to being, being, people being translated today to say that they want us to spend more money on, on schools. I don't think that's what anybody's trying to do. I think they're looking for this to be a little bit equitable. They're not looking for us to just sit down and say, this is what the comptroller says, this is what the mayor says, oh, that's what we have to vote for. Nobody's asking questions. We, we have asked the superintendent once he comes down. The, the superintendent is supposed to be the expert in the school system. The school committee voted unanimously. Uh, I, this is never, I, I'm going to tell you now, I've sat here a long time, this is never going to be solved. There is never going to be, um, a meeting of the minds with the city council, the mayor's office, school committee, uh, superintendent. It's just not going to happen because there's no real will to do it. It, it, it sounded obvious tonight by some of the people that spoke ahead of us. You know that with Desi's numbers, the, the Department of Education, on our net school spending, we are in two hundred ninety-one place, our, our spot is two hundred ninety-one out of three hundred and nineteen. That's how little we spent and I don't even want to tell you what the communities are between two hundred ninety-one and three hundred and nineteen. Because if anybody thinks we belong in those categories with some of those, those cities and towns, uh, I got to tell you, I don't think we'd want to be there. Uh, I think there are ways to look at this. I think, I was hoping that we would have a little bit further time. We do have the ability to do that so that we could sit a number of us and have some honest to goodness discussion. I don't care if the mayor wants to say, hey, absolutely not, we can't do this. Fine. Then let the superintendent say, all right, let me see if I can do this. There's got to be a conversation and there isn't any. It's great for one or two counselors to say, jump in and say, they're going to save the day, they're going to get Chromebooks, they're going to do this, they're going to do that. Uh, that's not, that's not what needs to be done in a budget situation that we're in every year doing the same thing. We need to really put our minds to it and this is a year that, there's no alternatives. This is a year that really needs help. What are we going to do if, if we are cut, the worst scenario, four to six to eight million dollars out of the school budget? Where is that going to come from? I mean, right now, if we pass this budget tonight, I could be wrong and the superintendent would have to answer it, but I don't believe there's enough money for them to even open the schools. They're going to have to be remote because I don't think they can open the schools, quite honestly, with the budget that they have. So, you know, if that's, is that what we want as a council? We don't want the schools to be open? And if the Commissioner of Education says, open the schools, so these are your guidelines and we have to say, no, we don't have the money to do it? We can't do that? With a, a city as, as fiscally responsible as we are and as healthy as we are? We've done a lot. I'll give the mayor credit and, and the city councils in the past and the comptroller because we didn't get to this point where we're healthy financially by not being prudent along the way. We've done some really good things along the way and for the most part, the city council supported it. But there's this constant issue with the schools and we need, we all know, if you've got one pot of money and you take a large sum of it and put it in one particular area, then something else is going to suffer with it. I would not support this budget tonight for a number of reasons, but the most important reason is that that four million dollars that's sitting, uh, in the line item budget, to, in, in the budget is a line item for OPEB and, uh, it, and maybe every counselor wants to support that and put that in OPEB, then fine, that's- And it, and maybe every counselor wants to support that and put that in OPEB, then fine, that, that, they'll get their wish. But once that money, once we approve this budget tonight, which is, I can see is gonna happen, that four million dollars is untouchable.
Just, just a point, just a point of order, Counsel Frida. The comptroller quite clearly suggested that that four million dollars is not for OPEB, it's a pension liability. That was said twice.
Okay. I, I, I stand corrected. Thank you. Um, same, same, same ball field, different, different base, I guess. Um, the point being, four million dollars tied up is gonna be invested and that money's not gonna be available. If we held, held off until we knew a little bit more and we know where we stand, if we need to use that money or part of that money, we would have it available. We're not gonna be able to, to do anything with it once it, once it's invested. Um, that's my driving piece the most. Because I think we could cut that down to two million this year or whatever we would have to do. I think we should look at the field. And I'm kinda disappointed that the Finance Committee has not had a meeting to go through this and listen to what was said and go through the budgets themselves after the hearings were over. Um, so that's.
Another point of order, the Finance Committee conducted a hearing this evening as well as their usual informational collection with all of the budgets, including the schools, last Wednesday night. That, that qualifies as a meeting of the Finance, Finance Committee. You can continue.
After, after tonight's public hearing?
They had a meeting, Claire, they had a meeting last Wednesday night, as we do each year, with all the budgets.
I, I just find it ironic that, uh, everybody that spoke, I'm the one that you really wanna go after, but that's okay. I'm done.
I want it, I, I only wanna do is set the record straight. That's all I'm trying to do.
I, I have the record straight. We have a difference of opinion. I have my own record straight. So it, it's up for everybody else to figure out which one of us is right. All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Frida. All right, uh, every counselor has had an opportunity to speak. Is there any rejoinder? Okay, hearing none. This will be by roll call vote, starting with Counsel Frida.
Nay.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Nay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Angelini.
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger.
Yay, yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of seven to two. C-74 is granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Ordered that the sum of one hundred and thirty-three million, four hundred and fifty-seven thousand, six hundred and twenty-two dollars be appropriated, uh, to the fiscal year 2021 budget. Sum out raised by fiscal year 2021 revenue. Move for the adoption of the order.
We've heard the request for the adoption of the order. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Counsel Frida.
Nay.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Nay.
Counsel, uh, Feckley.
Yay.
Counsel Angelini.
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger.
Yay.
Counsel, um, Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier.
Yay.
I shall be recorded as yay. Um, I want to thank the Finance Committee. I want to thank every, uh, counselor who spoke this evening, uh, regardless of what side of the equation they were on on the vote. I want to thank all of the members of the public and the school department and the sc- uh, school committee members who spoke. This is one thing we can agree on. Uh, this is a difficult year. This is a difficult process. Um, as I said at the beginning, uh, this evening, um, when this matter was heard during the public hearing, I, as I have done in the past, will work very diligently with the mayor and the comptroller to find additional sources of funding for the schools. And I'm sure you, uh, as counselors, will all join me in that effort and that we will, uh, roll up our sleeves and, and make this work the best possible way we can for all of the citizens of our community. Again, I thank you, um, for all of your eloquent, uh, remarks, um, whether they were for or against the budget. And, um, C-74 is concluded. And I think the only other thing we have, uh, this evening is, uh, on, on the Public Service, is sixty-six dash twenty. Does the cheerwoman of Public Service have a report?
I do, Mr. President. Sixty-six dash twenty, Comcaston, Massachusetts three, Incorporated. Request permission to install a new underground conduit to service number one Main Street, Water Street. Starting at utility pole number three, excavating to place two, four inch PVC conduit, two hundred and ninety-five feet plus or minus to a proposed twenty-five inch by thirty-six inch vault. From the newly placed vault, continuing with the excavation with two four inch PVC conduits, three hundred and fifty-five feet plus or minus to a proposed twenty-four inch by thirty-six inch vault located on Mechanic Street. From the newly placed vault, the conduit will continue three feet, uh, plus or minus on the property of one Main Street. In addition, two four inch PVC conduits will be stubbed out of the vault for a future takeoff. We had a public hearing tonight. The explanation was given to us. And, uh, the recommendation, I believe, would be, um, to grant. And you might ask the other members of my committee.
Thank you, Counsel Frida. Counsel Feckley.
I'm in agreement.
And Counsel Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant sixty-six dash twenty. Is there any further discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. Counselor David Cormier. Um, I do need to abstain from sixty-six dash twenty. This petitioner is a direct competitor of my employer and my employer would, um, would prohibit me from voting, uh, on this matter. Thank you.
Very well. Your abstention is noted for the record. Any other discussion? Hearing none by roll call. Counsel Frida.
Yay.
Counsel Dombrowski.
Yay.
Counsel Shalfo Zephyr.
Yay.
Counsel Feckley.
Yay, yay.
Counsel Angelini.
Yay.
Counsel Arndinger.
Yay.
Counsel Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Counsel David Cormier. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Counsel. And I shall be recorded as yay by a vote of eight to zero. Sixty-six dash twenty, uh, has been granted. Uh, we have no new business. We have no old business. Do we have any items on the community calendar?
Uh, yes, Mr. President, I do, Counsel Frida.
You will. Thank you.
It probably doesn't, probably doesn't belong on the co- community calendar, but, um, it'd be understandable. Uh, if anybody went by, uh, Central Street today, they would notice that buildings are coming down to the proposed police station. It's been a long time coming, um, and after asbestos discussions back and forth and decisions to be made, they finally started tearing the buildings down. So, um, there are five of us on the committee that are working with data lists to try to put some, um, presentations together and hopefully it won't be too long before we can bring it before the council.
I was gonna suggest just that. That sounds like a really good idea. I appreciate your work on behalf of that, uh, the Police Building Committee, Counsel Frida, and, uh, please keep us updated. Um, is there anything? Thank you very much. Is there anything else on the community calendar?
Yes, um, Mr. President, this is Counsel Shalfo Zephyr. This coming, um, Friday, Saturday, thank you. This coming Friday and Saturday, the June twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh, the city is, um, having, celebrating bargain days, which, um, many of us will remember from the past. So I just wanted to note that and also let the community know that, uh, Ginny's Helping Hand, our thrift store is not quite open, but we will be outside, um, participating in bargain days and we'll have lots of great things, um, for sale on, um, Friday, the twenty-sixth and twenty-seventh.
Wonderful. Thank you for letting us know about that, Counsel Shalfo Zephyr. Is there any other counselor that has any item for the community calendar? Okay.
Would the chair have taken a motion to adjourn?
Uh, so moved, uh, there's, do we have a second?
Second. Uh, Cormier.
Any objection to adjourning anybody? I don't think so, right? We, we are, I'm sorry?
No.
We, we, unless somebody wants a formal vote, we are adjourned.
Thank you.
Good night.
Thank you. Good night, everyone.
Thank you very much for your, for your work.